Good afternoon, everybody. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please establish court.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloie? Is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
I'm here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
I'm here.
Councilmember Shenir?
I must be here, too.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
I am here.
Councilmember Vang?
Very present.
Thank you. And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Hey, good evening or afternoon to everybody, my colleagues, the city staff, members of the public. Let us begin tonight and ask the Vice Mayor if she could please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance.
Sure, Mayor, if the folks would please stand. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Mido Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. All right, you place your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let us begin with, we have three special presentations before we get to the consent calendar. I'll start with Mayor Protem Gata and the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, it gives me a great pleasure to recognize today the recipient of the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship. Well, who was George H. Clark? Well, he was our very own Sacramento City Manager from nineteen hundred to nineteen oh three, and in nineteen fifty-one, a scholarship was established in his honor, resulting from a bequest made under his will. Now, the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship Fund provides scholarship benefits to Sacramento high school students, and it's administered by not only the superintendent of the Sacramento Unified School District, but by the city manager of Sacramento. Now, this year, the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship goes to a local warrior of Sacramento, Hiram Johnson, here by the name of Lei Chuliang, and he is the son of Thing Kwong Liang and Young Ma. Now, he's a graduate here of Hiram Johnson, who is attending now, is going to be attending now UC San Diego. He received the scholarship from his stellar participation in not only sports, volunteerism, academics, but also the combination of all of his, you know, well-roundedness as a student. And his hobbies and his college major is biomedical science. So, a very honored to recognize here the recipient of the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship from our past city manager to our current city manager. And I didn't know, I don't know if we have anyone from the family online, or if the city manager wanted to comment on the scholarship here. Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone here, but I do want to recognize and thank the family and just a stellar student from Hiram Johnson. For all those warriors out there, go Warriors.
Love Hiram Johnson. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Wonderful. Let's go to the second presentation, which is also yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it also gives me a great honor to recognize this month of June also as the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And to present this today, we'll have with us not only Aramanta Marcelos, who's the advocacy manager at the Alzheimer's Association, Howard Posner, a local volunteer, stellar public servant for us in Sacramento region, and Carlos Oliveras Jr., again, another volunteer. We, June is known as Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Month, a disease that's progressive and very, you know, creates a very destructive brain disorder, tragically robs many individuals of their memories, their cognitive abilities. In the Sacramento County area, just alone, we have twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five residents who live with Alzheimer's. That number is recorded in twenty nineteen, and it's expected to grow by a hundred and twenty-seven percent by twenty forty. Now, a couple interesting statistics and things to consider here is that it has been affecting communities of color disproportionately. Right now, Latino communities in California living with Alzheimer's now have grown by almost triple. And also, the Black Californians living with Alzheimer's is also expected to triple by twenty forty, and the Asian American Pacific Islander community also is looking, has the impacts of Alzheimer's that are expected to more than double now. Individuals living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers, you know, you know, we spend this month in recognizing not only those surviving with Alzheimer's, those who are supporting them and their families, and those in the, who are day-to-day working with folks affected by Alzheimer's. So today, I'd like to pass this over and recognize Aramanta here, and then all of our volunteers and folks who are helping so many Sacramentoans who are affected by Alzheimer's.
Thank you. Who are we turning it over to, Mayor Protem?
Aramantas Marcelos, is she online here?
Marcelos.
Unfortunately, Mayor Protem, none of the people that you announced are online.
Well, we want to thank them and recognize them again, and we want to recognize the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And I do want to recognize also that here in Sacramento, we do have the UC Davis, the health system has the Alzheimer's Disease Center, and it's one of the leading areas of health that's helping us out here. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all those who are living with Alzheimer's and all those who are supporting those who are living with Alzheimer's.
So, Mayor Protem, it looks like Mr. Posner is online.
Yeah, hi, Eric and Mr. Mayor, it's Howard Posner.
Hi, Eric.
The screen says Janice Posner. We were going to have a nice contingent show up tonight. I'm a volunteer as many Sacramentoans are with the Alzheimer's Association. We were misinformed. We thought we were going to be meeting in person. So, a lot of us rushed home to see if we could get on Zoom in time, and apparently I was the first one who made it. But we appreciate the council making this recognition, and it's some of you may know, my family was particularly hard-hit. My mother and father are deceased. They had Alzheimer's. My sister is suffering with it now. It's, there aren't very many people, certainly in our generation, who don't have friends or relatives who have suffered from this, or who are suffering, or who will suffer. So, we appreciate the city making this recognition and helping us get the word out as we try and educate folks about what to look for, about what resources are available, and about the very exciting research that's going on, which we hope finally will bring us closer to a cure or prevention. So, thank you to Councilman Gara and to the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Howard, for helping lead on the cause, really, especially all the suffering that you described. And Eric, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have Councilmember Harris's name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor, I want to thank Howard Posner for making an appearance and being a champion for cure for Alzheimer's disease. It is something that, he's absolutely right. It's touched most people of age. I'm a person of age, so is Rick. I think that we probably have had some issues with Alzheimer's. I know that I have. Howard, thank you. You're a gracious man, and I really appreciate your presence here.
Thanks, Jeff.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank also, you know, Howard for his years of service as a local elected official, and also to our, the state of California. He worked as a public servant for the state legislature for many years, and and, you know, has been consistently committed to the community. So, thank you as well, not only for this cause, for Alzheimer's, but for your years of service.
Thanks, Eric, and it's good to see you.
We end the special presentations maybe on a high note here, which is Councilmember Vang's recognition of of a very special month in Sacramento and throughout our country. Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I'm incredibly honored actually to be co-presenting with Councilwoman Valenzuela.
I'm sorry.
No worries. On a resolution to recognize June as Pride Month, as we enter the last week of Pride, I think it's incredibly important for us as a council and a city to remember that Pride was, Pride was and continues to be really about protest, progress, and change. And actually, about fifty-three years ago, on this exact same day, on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-eight, was when the Stonewall riots actually occurred in New York City. And I know that we wouldn't be here today had it not been for a black trans woman who really led the uprising against brutal police raid at the Stonewall Inn in June of nineteen sixty-nine. And the riots were really an act of community resistance in the struggle towards LGBT rights, freedoms, and protections. Also, this month, on June twenty-sixth, also marks the seven year when the US Supreme Court legalized same-sex marriage in the United States. And we know that many of these protections are also under attack and that the work is not yet done and actually continues to this day. That's why it's so important that our city continues to center and uplift our LGBT siblings and community and celebrate pride. I do want to take this time to just say thank you to all the city staff and members of the ERG who organized the June first flag raising earlier this month. I think many of us was able to participate in it. It was just a really beautiful and powerful moment for our city. And also, just a shout-out to our city LGBTQ employees resource group for always organizing and cultivating safe spaces for our city employees. And I also can't, I have to also mention one more person. I just want to take this time to also thank Asia Lee, who's my policy director. She's also a member of the LGBTQ ERG group who worked hard to actually get this resolution completed today so that I could present it. And so, really just want to say to all our LGBT staff and our LGBTQ employee resource group that I'm hella grateful to have the opportunity to serve and fight alongside all of you to continue the fight, especially in honor of those who came before us and continue to fight endlessly to make sure that all of y'all have the rights that we have today. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Councilwoman Valenzuela to share her reflection and present of a special recognition to our city LGBTQ employee resource group.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Vang. I guess our staff works so closely together on this that they gave us the exact same talking point, so I'm gonna wing in a little bit from my own personal experience and just my reflection on just how amazing the Employee Resource Group has been, how welcoming they have been to allies like myself, and just how much I am so proud of the work that they are accomplishing here in the city. And I think that we are all very aware of the moment that we are in. You know, I think a lot of us, especially those of us who are able to bear children, have spent the last few days really grieving for what has happened, really preparing ourselves for the fight, but everything else that was protected by the Fourteenth Amendment and the court, including a lot of the rights for the LGBTQ plus community are now directly under threat with Justice Thomas naming them in his concurrence opinion. It's it's a really scary time for all of us, and I think a time for us to wrap arms around each other to remind ourselves of those who came before us, of that fighting spirit, of that rioting spirit, for lack of a better way of saying it, and really prepare ourselves to continue that mantle and that spirit and that tradition that was handed to us from those who came before and fought so long and hard to get us where we are. We're still so far from where we need to be, but now we find ourselves in a position of defending where we've come and really looking, using this Pride Month to remind ourselves and to recommit ourselves to that really important work. So with that, I would like to introduce who's accepting on behalf of the Employee Resource Group. The LGBTQ plus Employee Resource Group is Leila and Elena, so I'd like to pass it over to them before our colleagues speak, so they can add a few words themselves. Thank you both.
Very good. Thank you so much. Leila?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang, and thank you, Asia Lee, for all of your work bringing forward this resolution and making this happen tonight. Elena and I are really honored to accept the resolution on behalf of the LGBTQ plus Employee Resource Group, and just want to reiterate some of the really important points that you made, councilmembers. And today, the fifty-third anniversary of the Stonewall uprising is an important opportunity to honor queer existence and resistance and solidarity across place and time. At Stonewall, as you said, LGBTQ plus people led by transgender people of color rose up to protect themselves from transphobic and homophobic and racist violence and oppression, and unfortunately, those problems persist today. And even as we celebrate Pride Month this June, we also have to mourn the many lives lost to transphobia and homophobia and racism, and recommit ourselves to the work, as you said. And with LGBTQ plus rights currently threatened at the federal level, it's especially meaningful to me and to other ERG members and residents. I'm sure that the city is demonstrating its commitment to LGBTQ plus residents and employees tonight. Elena?
Hi, and I'll pick up where Leila left off. We just really thank city council for adopting this resolution and recognizing Pride Month and the LGBTQ plus Employee Resource Group. The Employee Resource Group is essential to making LGBTQ plus staff feel recognized and supported within the city organization. We like to thank our colleagues in the LGBTQ plus ERG for their leadership to make the city safe and an equitable place for employees of all genders and sexualities. From creating gender and sexuality awareness training for city staff to organizing the annual Pride flag raising event, which was awesome this year. We had pins. And advising on city policies and offering spaces to have fun and enjoy our community. We also acknowledge the many community organizations serving LGBTQ plus residents and making Sacramento a vibrant place to live. While there is much more work to be done, as Ben was saying, it is inspiring and humbling to consider how much has changed in fifty-three years. Again, thank you, council, for recognizing Pride Month and the LGBTQ plus ERG tonight. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you very much. Let me turn it over to my colleagues now. I see Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Ashby, and Mayor Protem Gata.
Thank you, Mayor. For the younger members here, there are at least three councilmembers who were alive and remember well the Stonewall uprising. Certainly, it was part of my life. And I would like to take a moment to recognize a couple of, an organization and one of our former colleagues who have fought this fight for a long time. So, the Stonewall Democratic Club is full of members who have lived this battle for decades. I'm thinking of Denny Mangers, Michael Sestak, and many others, Jen Dorothy. Just so many in the Stonewall Democratic Club who have been fighting this fight for so long. And it is, of course, an essential part of what we do as policymakers and just members of a society that needs to be more inclusive. But I'd also like to recognize our former colleague, Steve Hanson, who was the first openly gay member of this body, who was always a champion for gay rights. And, you know, fought for the LGBTQIA community with every fiber of his being. So, you know, thank you for this resolution. Thank you for keeping up the battle. Thank you for acknowledging the struggles that we have with the Supreme Court and throughout our society. This is a really important thing. And by the way, some of us have children who identify as queer and questioning. So, this is not a foreign idea to a lot of us on this body. Anyway, we appreciate your work on this, and we will keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I see Vice Mayor Ashby, Mayor Protem Gata.
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I wanted to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang for bringing this forward and making sure that we took the time at a council meeting to acknowledge our own staff and their employment group. I remember when Francine Turner came to my office and told me she was going to start this group. And she was so excited, and I think she asked me for startup money. She was probably making her way down the hallway, right, asking everybody. So, for me to now see these two beautiful faces on here of city staff, and and I know there are so many more, and I couldn't be at the flag raising because it's also at the time of drop-off for my kids, but I watched it happen on Councilmember Vang's social media, and I was so proud. And I just, good job bringing this forward. And you know, Councilmember Valenzuela, as you and Councilmember Vang both know, because we talked a lot over the last few days about things that have happened, it just feels a little extra heavy this year because it also feels so uncertain. You know, we've been making such good progress, and this post-Roe world feels scary and uncertain and wrong. And in the month where we're celebrating Pride and what a post-Roe world looks like for the Pride community, but also the statements that Councilwoman Valenzuela has pointed to, that we're in at least one of the dissents, should help us all remember to dig deep for our resolve and know that there are big fights still ahead of us, because we cannot sit back and let our daughters or the next generation of childbearing people have fewer rights than we have. That's not okay. And I'm very proud to live in California, but it's not good enough. We have to make sure that people across this country have all of their rights intact, and Pride is a really great way to remember it. And Stonewall is a really good example of what is possible. So, thanks for bringing it forward, ladies. You guys did a really nice job. Appreciate it.
Well said. Thank you. Mayor Protem Gata?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Again, want to thank Leila, Elena, and all of our city staff who who have, you know, made this even more significant this year at a critical time. I think as my colleague had mentioned, that the the Thomas Opinion sends a chilling signal for us. And the fact that we need to engage more of our own neighbors, our own allies, to make sure that everyone in Sacramento is engaged in protecting the rights of all Sacramentoans. I do want to thank all of the city staff who made our Pride picnic, you know, a success. I want to take this opportunity to also thank the Gay Men's Choir who did a cameo and came in and uplifted everyone as well, and gave everyone energy to move forward, and do want to thank Patrick Harbison for his emceeing of the Pride picnic, and what an amazing event. There are a number of organizations, and strong organizations in Sacramento who also, you know, made this an important educational, but momentous occasion. The Stonewall Foundation, who's been raising scholarships for many of our LGBTQIA members, the SAC LGBTQ Center, the Trans and Queer Youth Collective, and the ERG group who came as our VIPs for the Pride picnic. And so, want to welcome them to District Six and in the Tahoe Park as well. And again, thank you to all the staff. Without our staff, it wouldn't have been a success. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you again, and proud to support this resolution.
Councilmember Valenzuela, did you have another?
Yeah, just in closing, because I think Vice Mayor Ashby recommended.
Can I, can I just?
I guess not in closing, just as a comment. Because what Vice Mayor Ashby just said about these last few days really struck a chord, because I think heavy is the right word. I think the other word that a lot of people have been using is hopeless. Hopelessness, it feels inevitable that these changes are coming, that we don't know what we can do. And I think what for me is so important about Pride is similar to the lunch counter protests that I know I've talked about with Councilwomen Virginians and other things, like folks who were doing that, they didn't know what was going to happen. They didn't know if they'd survive it. They didn't know if they'd be in jail, if it worsened. I think I am trying to take a lot of hope in that moment of we don't know where we're going. We don't really know where the road lies, but we do know that we're fighting for something important, and that I think Pride, when I think back on that moment in that bar and what those individuals were thinking when they decided to fight back, it sober's me to realize sort of what they didn't know they were starting probably in that moment and where it's led, and just, I hope we all take a little, take a moment to result, like, take some hope out of that. We don't know where we're going. We don't know how long it will be. It could be years, it could be decades before we can fight these rules back, but we have to keep pushing, and we have to keep fighting. And so I just wanted to put that out as well, because I want to acknowledge the hopelessness. But also, that's why I think it is so important we're doing this today. I really want to thank Councilmember Vang's office for letting us participate with her.
Yeah, thank you to all of you, so eloquent colleagues and city leaders. And I don't have much to add, except you're so right, the future is uncertain, but good people determine the future. And that's what we all have the opportunity to do. And you're absolutely right to look back at the context of history, because when you do, it, it is both humbling, but it's also heartening. I mean, I tell the story often, but because it's just so resonant to me, being a very young member of the State Assembly. And Democrat, you know, not to be partisan, but, you know, Democrats divided over the question of whether or not the state law should grant hospital visitation rights to domestic partners. That's what I remember. And I remember that being controversial, and it's squeaking by, and it passing. And you could never have imagined, I can never imagine, in nineteen ninety-eight, that that decades later, within my cert public service and lifetime, we would have marriage equality. And marriage equality is going to remain the law of California always, and hopefully will remain the law of the land. But we can continue to make the future what we want it to be. And it's a future that is just and that is inclusive, that honors people for who they are and who they love, and that's the end of the story. So, thank you, because this does give us a excellent. Let's move on to the business that we must attend to tonight. We have a consent calendar. Adam Clerk, we're going to pull item two, as I understand it, for a future date?
That's correct, Mayor. We're going to pull that item, so we will not be discussing that this evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there other items on the consent calendar that members would like to be voted on separately or commented? I know Councilmember Harris, I'll save you, because you told me you want to comment on item ten, and you want a separate vote on item twenty-seven. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a comment on thirty-five, not to be pulled.
Okay, let's run here. Very good. Okay, so then, why don't we take then?
There, there's a couple more hands raised.
Oh, I didn't see. Sorry, sorry. Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela, go, go.
Hi, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item thirty-four, not pull it, but just make a comment on it.
Good. Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela?
Oops, sorry, I convinced you. I'd like to pull thirty-two just for a separate vote, no comment needed.
Separate vote, okay.
Mayor, did Jeff pull, I don't need to pull twenty-seven, but I did have a question, but it's probably also.
He wants, he wants a separate vote on twenty-seven, so it will be considered separately. Okay. Do I see anybody else? Am I missing any other hands? Councilmember Vang, again? Your hand's still up. Okay, there we go. All right then, why don't we then take a motion? Item two is pulled. Items one, three through twenty-six and twenty-eight through thirty-five. Take a motion to get that on the.
Sorry, Mayor, I asked for thirty-two to be separate vote.
I missed it. Okay, let me say it again. I'm trying. Okay. Item one, a motion for item one, three through twenty-six, twenty-eight through thirty-one, and thirty-three through thirty-five.
That's good, Mayor, but don't forget my comments on number.
I am not forgetting. Don't worry. Okay, that's a motion, that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second that emotion. Okay. So, moved and seconded, let's then hear comments on items, as you said, ten, and Councilmember Vang on thirty-four. 34, Councilmember Chenier on 35, okay? Go ahead. Jeff, 10.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On item number 10, you all might recall that I think it was 20, gosh, was it 2018? That Councilmember Ashby and I put up a pretty good fight to get funding for Natomas. She ended up with an aquatics center and I ended up with a couple of million dollars for Northgate to effect what is finally coming to pass, which is signalization to slow down the traffic and create a lot more safety on the very underserved corridor. I'm very happy that this project is, the contract is about to be let or has been let. And we are going to commence in July and affect this before I'm off the council. So I would really appreciate your i-vote on number 10. This is going to be a great thing for the Northgate community. That's it, Mayor.
Super. Thank you so much. Okay.
Congratulations, Councilmember Harris, on that. I know you fought really hard.
Yep, congratulations. It's great. Measure you at work. 34, Councilmember Vang, a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity actually to thank your staff, Mayor Andrew Kehoe and my staff, Asia Lee from my office and all of the members of the Food Justice Task Force who actually worked with us for the past four months to really help create the framework for the Food Justice Grant Program that we're going to be authorizing today on consent. Also want to give a quick shout out to Ami Barnes. I'm really proud that we were actually able to use the interim racial equity tool at the beginning of the process to really pilot and create the framework for this funding as well. And so just a shout out to Ami for her assistance. Definitely want to give a shout out to city staff because nothing gets done without city staff. I want to thank Ginger and Denise from Economic Development as well for their assistance. And we're really excited to release the NOFA later this summer and really begin to get these dollars to our communities on the ground to address food insecurity in our community. So thank you, Mayor, for co-leading this task force with me and just want to give a shout out to everyone who's participated over the past few months to make sure that we have a solid framework for the funding.
No, you're the one leading, really leading, and I thank you so much and your staff and my staff, Andrew Kehoe as well. Thank you. It's great work. It is a million dollars we're going to get out and it is going to make food access a city priority here as it should be. And so it's terrific work. We'll leave it at the beginning. Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is around item 35 and this proves nothing if it doesn't prove that patience is important. And if there's one thing I've learned in 12 years on this council is if you wait long enough, things will generally come around back to you. So this is an item that we were pushing to make sure that young people have access to fields, particularly if they can't pay the fees. We want to make sure that there are safe places and that all of our neighborhoods are open and welcoming to Little Leagues and different types of organizations. It took us two budget rounds to get there. But what this will do is waive the fees for sports teams so that they can use fields and it won't take money out of their pockets that they need for uniforms and other types of things. So I want to appreciate the folks at YFC, Assistant City Manager Laura for helping get this done and my Claudia Jason on my staff for sticking with it. It took a long time, but it's totally the right thing to do and totally aligned with the equity and diversity work that we're doing across the district.
It's great. Little thing and a big thing, so. Thank you. All right, do we have, yep?
If, if I could take this opportunity to, in the vein of Councilmember Chenier it takes time for an item to go through. On the flip side, I know we had this discussion years ago about youth being able to access it. But I want to flip it to the other side. I want to make sure that I'm going to put this in Assistant City Manager Laura's head. We had this discussion in the budget about community centers and the cost for seniors to participate. So hopefully in not too much of a long time, we can look at making sure that our seniors also have those options and opportunities. I just want to use this opportunity to put that plug in right now and again, agree with Councilmember Chenier on the, on the years of work on this reduction of the food program for kids.
Very good. Thank you. All right, do we have public testimony on any of the items that have been moved for the consent calendar other than items 27 and 32?
So Mayor, I have six hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar.
That may include those items. Let's just hear the public and then we'll go from there.
The first is a phone number, 4366.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute. I'll go to the next person, Rebecca.
Yes, this is Rebecca Santal and commenting on item 10. 1965, my brother was killed on Northgate Boulevard. And at that time is when I started my, coming before the city council advocating for safe traffic on Northgate Boulevard. I want people to know, we've been promised before that these things were going to happen, so I'm hopeful, many of us are hopeful, that in fact we will see those traffic signals come up, especially on that one street where we have Twin Rivers school buses pulling out daily and the number of terrible accidents that continue on Northgate Boulevard. So looking forward to July. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Heather Fargo.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time to hear from me. First of all, I do want to thank you both for item 10 and 34, great moves. But I mostly want to talk about item 27. I know that Councilmember Harris has pulled that off for comments. I'm not sure what he's going to say and whether you would like me to wait until he takes the lead on this or whether I can go ahead and make.
Go right ahead, Mayor Fargo.
So I sent you all emails today along with city clerk and city staff and city manager and city attorney regarding the sale of the Fong Ranch property, which has been designated for park purposes in South Natomas for decades since actually before I was elected. And at one point, that entire area was going to be our community park. Unfortunately, we had to give it up for the high school and take a smaller site further south on Truxell where it is now. But the site that is being sold now was, had been designated back in the mid 90s to be a youth sports complex for the Natomas Youth Baseball League. And we actually had a lease between the league and the city for them to develop that site. Unfortunately, because of the fees that were being charged, that are being charged for the Natomas Basin Conservancy, the city at that point didn't have the extra million to put into the project. The group didn't have enough money, ability to raise. So we ended up kind of letting it go for a while and then I left being mayor, Ray Chethaway left in 2010 being city council member and we went through through Angelique Ashby, Steve Cohn, and then Jeff Harris by 2014. So we had a lot of changes both on the council and within the community. So it was never built. What I'd like to ask is that the city designate the proceeds from this sale to other parks in the South Natomas Community Plan area because it was supposed to be a park initially and we think that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Mayor, could I ask Mayor Fargo a quick question? I'm sorry, just before.
Yeah, please go.
I just, Mayor Fargo, I think I remember this right and Jeff may have had staff. He probably has had staff explain it to him. But I remember when I came on, it was explained to me because I had that piece for aisle two that the builder across the freeway, actually in District One, Opus had helped dedicate that land for Parks Land as part of their improvement project. Is that, and that's, and then I remember, I do remember, of course, the Natomas Youth Pony League was going to take it over and then it didn't become that. And I think we all agree this is a great use and Jeff's done a great job shepherding this here. But just to put a finer point on, I think what I hear you saying originally, that promise from the from Opus, the developer who helped us acquire this piece of land, Opus owns the buildings on the other side of 80 that they purchased this for Parks use for the city, isn't that right?
And actually, I've been trying to sort that out today. I don't have the records in my mind. In my mind, it was actually owned by the city before Opus did the promenade. But what Opus had agreed to do was to give a million dollars to help develop the site. We ended up not collecting that million. They ultimately went bankrupt. We had a recession. You know, a lot of things have happened. So I don't remember who the original owner was of that site, whether it was the Fong Ranch family or whether it was part of the high school site initially, but not used by them, but owned by the city. So it's been owned by the city for decades and it was supposed to be for park purposes. And we haven't really, so to me, it just makes sense that the proceeds at this point would be able to stay in South Natomas where we still have a lot of park and recreation needs, both for park development, the second half of the community center, and I could go on.
We did use a million dollars to fix the plumbing at the current Natomas Youth Pony Fields back when we figured out that we couldn't develop that piece of land. And Jeff may have done more legwork since my memory is now, this is 10 years old for me. But I do remember it being a promise to the community that it would be a net gain in parks, so.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Jeff, you might have more info than me at this point.
Well, thank you, Angelique. I'll talk about it when the item comes up for a vote.
Okay.
And we're through public comment.
Okay, thank you. Let us continue with the public comment. Thank you, Mayor Fargo.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lambert Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yes, the, the number that I wanted to speak on is number 34. Anything that does, that has to do with ARPA funding, I study it like I'm graduating from a university. And I want to thank City Councilwoman My Vang, who I thought heard focus on that number and I think I got clarity listening to her. So thank you, City Councilwoman My Vang.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jessica Serprenant.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I wanted to comment on number 10, the Northgate Boulevard's project. I have two students that go to Smythe Elementary School. Four years ago, on the first day of school, a dog got hit. And that intersection, Hagan and and Northgate, they never follow the speed limit around the school. It should be 25. And it's really heartening to see, to see that these kids, including mine and all the other kids, are in a really dangerous crossway. And it, it breaks my heart because I'll have, I'll go to Citrus Heights, I'll go to Roseville and around the schools, I see police on the first day. I see people slowing down. People take it serious in other communities. But when I drop my kids off at school at Smythe off North Gate in Hagan, nobody pays attention. There's no cops there. I have asked for cops to be there for at least the first day of school. They show up, but they never give tickets. And I know this for a fact because I do talk to the cross guard and I've just voiced my concern. It's just we need to put the kids' safety first, no matter what. It's a school zone, slow down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Felipe Sibadra. Sibadra, Felipe?
Hello, I would like to speak on item 38. I might be a little ahead of myself.
Yes, we're still on the consent calendar.
Yeah.
Next speaker. Thank you, Felipe. So you'll raise your hand later in the meeting. Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Greetings, City Council. My name's Keon Bliss. I'm the Vice Chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. And I wanted to comment on item one, which is the council follow-up log. And just wondering, as I don't see it listed on there, whether this would be the space where the council's consideration and direction that was provided back on March 22nd meeting for the implementation of the recommendations from our commission. Given that it is now halfway through 2022 and we're still talking about recommendations, just a small set of 47 recommendations from 2020, I'm just curious, when is that coming back onto this council's, council's agenda for consideration? And how quickly can we expect the other recommendations to come forward? I'm really concerned that we are creating and just continuing the backlog with several years worth of recommendations still yet to be considered. And one of our committees this year actually is to review all of our past recommendations to bring back to you. So I'm just wondering what, what, when can we expect the city council to bring back the next set of recommendations from 2020? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you and good afternoon. I want to lend my support to consent item number 34, the city council's COVID-19 response, the ARPA framework and funding priorities, budget allocation for the ARPA food security initiatives. Sorry about that. Specifically bringing $1 million to support the Food Justice Task Force that was established in August 2021 by Councilmember My Vang and Mayor Daryl Steinberg, as was noted earlier. For full disclosure, I am a member of the Food Justice Task Force and I do look forward to achieving the goal of the task force that is to ensure there is sufficient, healthy and accessible food for all by building a more robust and resilient food economy, such as building a full-size, full-service grocery store in the Metaview neighborhood on Metaview Road. That last bit is my personal preference, but again, I do lend my full support in bringing the monies to this wonderful cause. Thank you.
I think if you're comments, the final speaker tonight is a phone number, 4105. Phone number, last four digits, 4105, if you'll unmute.
Good evening. This is Brenda Ruiz with the Sacramento Food Policy Council, also a member of the Healthy Food or the Food Justice Task Force in strong support of consent item number 34 and the creation of the MYOP and pull down the ARPA funds for distribution. It's an exciting project and we look forward to mid-year budget discussions where the council can hopefully supplement and add more dollars into the, into the MYOP in order to further deepen the impact and mitigate food insecurity. The Food Policy Council is also interested to bring forward issues of food system resiliency onto the task force that would include urban agriculture and other opportunities to have a more resilient food system overall, which contributes to food security at the neighborhood level. Thank you to all the staff that contributed so much time and in strong support. Thank you so much.
Thank you for comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you to the members of the public. Let us then vote on the consent calendar. Again, absent items 27 and 32. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Councilmember, Councilmember Harris, you were going to make the comment on item 10 and that was included as part of the.
Well, I did make a comment on 10, but I would say one more thing if you.
Okay, go, go.
You know, the reason that it took so long to implement the signal is they. You know, the reason that it took so long to implement the signalization project is because we decided to make it a little more real than first planned. In other words, these lights will be interconnected, which added a lot of work to the process. But what it means is that they can be controlled by the Traffic Ops, uh, Operations Center at City Hall. And in real time, we can adjust to the traffic patterns on North Gate. That means that these lights will be, um, really much more robust in terms of controlling the speeding and the traffic along North Gate. People have queried me why it's taken so long. Well, every project takes a while with the city. But to make it really efficacious, we, we needed to interconnect the lights. That required a lot of easements. It required a lot more work by the Department of Public Works. But the result for the public will be much enhanced safety. So it was worth the wait and I'm really happy to get this project going.
Okay, good, good. Now let's go to, uh, item twenty-twenty-seven, which you wanted to be heard separately. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as this council knows, we surplus this property through a council vote. Anton Development came forward with a project. It was pretty adventurous. We've worked on it, refined it, and come up with what I think is a really great project for South Natomas that will offer a lot more housing and a significant, uh, proportion of it is affordable. It's a, it's another significant addition to the inventory of affordable housing, which I think that this council really prioritizes. But the fact of the matter is, as you heard from former Mayor Heather Fargo, this was an unfulfilled pro- promise to the South Natomas community for a youth baseball, uh, field for Natomas youth, youth baseball. And there's been some disgruntlement about using this, this, uh, property, surplusing and using it for housing. I think it's a great use and I totally support it. But I do believe that a promise, promised is something that needs to be fulfilled. So I would like to move the staff recommendation because the Anton Development is something we really need. But I would like to add direction that the surplus funds from the sale, there are many obligations on the sale. Uh, they're going to the Department of Utilities and other ways that the, that the money is obligated. I think the surplus is in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Uh, look, I gotta tell you, in South Natomas, it's almost completely developed. We don't have the chance to develop PIF and Quimby funds in South Natomas. I think it's entirely fair for me to ask this council and to add direction to the staff recommendation that the money be directed to the Parks Department for park improvements in South Natomas. And that is my motion. That is my direction. And I hope that you will support me in it.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to second his motion. And as a other member of this body who formerly represented that piece of land, he's got it right on the money. We, we owe a promise here and I thank the former mayor for calling in too. And I thank Councilmember Harris for taking the lead, but it is the right thing to do. And the parks in South Natomas could certainly use the help, especially the community centerpiece that isn't quite built out yet. So a million dollars would go a long way. I'd like to second that motion and, and also congratulate Councilmember Harris on his leadership on the side.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, any other members on this? Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yep, thank you for your leadership on this. Absolutely. One hundred percent, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you. That's great. Uh, very good. Councilmember Valenzuela did not ask to speak on, but asked for a separate vote on item thirty-two. So if I could.
Well, if I could, um, I'll make a quick comment, Mayor, just that I have an outstanding item on the law and I think it law and led on a privacy ordinance for the city of Sacramento. Um, that's a big part of why I continue to vote no on this particular initiative. So, thank you, Mayor.
No problem. So, uh, is there a motion on item thirty-two?
I'll move it, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Shanir?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes seven to two. That completes the consent calendar. And let's now move to the public hearings. Hopefully, we can dispense item, uh, first of all, item thirty-eight, Councilmember Harris, why don't we take that up first because there are people maybe waiting. I know you have a specific, uh, motion on item thirty-eight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, on this particular project, which is a brilliant project for the River District, uh, there's a little bit of consternation with a couple of parties. The developer is working with those parties to resolve some issues. So my, uh, motion is to continue to adate certain July nineteenth to hear this item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any testimony on the continuance itself, not on the merits of the project? Madam Clerk?
So Mayor, I shows, um, three hands raised, two hands raised. I just want to con- confirm that they are, um, the continuance and not on the item itself. Um, so Chris Palermo? Chris Palomo?
Uh, I was calling in to speak on the item itself.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been, the motion is to continue. Uh, you can tell us whether you favor that or not.
Felipe Sabadra? Felipe Sabadra, did you want to speak on the continuance of item thirty-eight? Um, Felipe is not unmuting.
Okay. Next then, please.
Thank you. So there's a motion, um, by Councilmember Harris and was it a second by Councilmember Gata?
Yes, let's call the roll on the continuance to July nineteenth.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that item is continued and, um, I know it'll be a full discussion when it is heard on the nineteenth of July. Let's go back now then to items thirty-six and thirty-seven. Don't know if we can take them together in separate votes. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I was waiting on the.
Who's presenting on items thirty-eight, uh, thirty-six and thirty-seven?
My apologies, Mayor. I'm Leslie Curry. I'm the Enforcement and Collection Supervisor with the City Finance Department. I'm sitting in for Latire Walsh this evening as she is out ill.
Okay, I hope she's better. Welcome.
Uh, thank you. So we're appearing this evening. If you'd like to take the two together, that would be great. We could save some time, maybe.
Please.
We are appearing to ask council to approve and adopt the resolutions to allow the city to move forward with special assessments for sidewalk repair fees and weed abatement fees that have gone unpaid for the past year and a half.
Okay. Is there public testimony on the, on either item, Madam Clerk?
So Mayor, I have two hands raised and to confirm, this is item thirty-six and thirty-seven. Felipe Sabadra?
Hello, City Council. I was, uh, wanted to speak on thirty-eight. Uh, I'm sure that was, uh, continued for a later date.
That's correct.
It was, it was continued. Thank you, Mr. Sabadra.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on these items.
I'll open and close a public hearing and move the item on thirty-six.
I will second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mayor, or Vice Mayor Ash?
Yes.
Mayor, I did have a question on the.
Oh, I apologize. Go.
Yeah, so I'd like to ask staff, you know, on the sidewalk repair piece, um, every once in a while, I get a correspondence from somebody who has a very special needs case whose sidewalk was repaired and they find themselves not able to pay the bill. And there's a possibility they could get put out of their house as a result. I'm wondering, does the city have a procedure in which we can assess cases like this where there are extenuating, uh, circumstances like, in this case, an amputation of a limb and the loss of work that would preclude somebody from paying these fees? Is there any way to work through cases like that?
We generally give anybody who contacts us the opportunity to come and make a payment plan with us. We have payment plans that are done on an individual case-by-case basis. We have payment plans that go anywhere from six months to five years with no interest. Uh, we do our best to work with everybody. In many cases, um, some people just claim they have no money at all and don't have the means. Unfortunately, we don't have any money to lend to them and I'm not aware that we can give away public funds. Uh, so I think those have to come under the purview of maybe your, the council yourselves and/or the department heads that would control these fees.
Yeah, understood. So I, I do have a case in which I think there are extenuating ci- uh, circumstances. I would like to work with you, if I could, to create a payment plan that may perhaps fit this person's situation. Uh, it really is a situation where we don't want to create another homeless individual because of the inability to pay for a sidewalk repair. So I, my staff will contact your office where we, we will work through this. Thank you, Leslie.
We'll be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Let's call the roll on.
Mayor, um, sorry, on that note, I raised my hand too. Um, I just, I want to note that, um, you know, this is something that I had put in like a mid-year letter ask as well because I think we probably should think about having some general fund money set aside for cases like this. And I wonder if we could add this to the docket for the fine and fee justice work too. I was really excited to see that we worked out a plan right now for the police to, um, on an income basis, consider moving forward with waiving towing fees because that's something that had picked a couple of our folks in a pickle where a vehicle gets stolen, it gets recovered, we tow it to someplace safe so that they can recover and now they're stuck paying the fees. So, so that committee is working through those questions. Um, so it would be really awesome maybe to put this on that radar in lieu of us making a general fund apportionment to help offset costs. Thanks.
Sure, okay. Makes sense. All right, now let's call the roll on thirty-six.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Shanir and a second by Jennings. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
And Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That passes. Thank you. A motion, uh, open and close the public hearing on the thirty-seven, please.
Open and close the public hearing, move the item. Second.
Second. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That passes. Thank you, Ms. Curry, for stepping in. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Let's go now to item thirty-nine. Who's presenting on?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Hello.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Peter Limos. I'm your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief for your Community Development Department. I would like to provide a short update on, uh, chapter eight point seven zero of the Stockham Municipal Code, Sacramento Municipal Code, I'm sorry, um, relating to portable leaf blowers. On November tenth, twenty-twenty, the city council adopted chapter eight point seven zero of the Sacramento City Code relating to portable blowers, which prohibits operating any blower um, when the air quality index PM two-point-five is one-hundred-one, um, on above, according to Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District for downtown Sacramento, registering unhealthy for sensitive groups. The intent of the ordinance is to prove air quality during sensitive times. On March twenty-second of this year, Councilmember Jeff Harris requested the city manager to have staff return to city council with a report back on the education, outreach and enforcement that has been conducted thus far. Since the adoption of the ordinance, the Community Development Department has received over four-hundred-and-fifty complaints regarding blowers and mailed five-hundred-and-ten notices to property owners and businesses owners citing restricted, uh, use of blowers. Only four of those complaints that we received pertain to the air quality index. In twenty-twenty-one, the AQI PM two-point-five exceeded one-hundred, a total of eleven days for the, um, Sacramento region. Nine of those eleven days were in August, but only six of those days, um, were detected at the downtown T Street monitoring station, which we could enforce. We believe the limited number of days that the AQI exceeded one-hundred is the main, um, distributing factor for the low volume of complaints for AQI. Most of the complaints we received re- pertained to the noise, um, control ordinance, which prohibits the use of gas-powered blowers before certain hours on certain days. And these resulted in approximately twenty-five instances where a citation was actually issued, um, for continued complaints. And that was a violation of, uh, Title eight-point-six-eight-one-eighty of the Sacramento Municipal Code. Since the adoption of the ordinance, staff is focused on outreach and ongoing education. Staff mailed a, a one-page flyer to three-hundred-and-seventy-five landscaping businesses in both Spanish and English. This flyer explained the new restrictive, um, restrictions provided FAQs on how and the, the law would be applied and the businesses for residents, um, for businesses and residents. It identified the effective date and detailed specifics regarding the AQI and how the ordinance would be enforced. Several in-person, uh, presentations and landscaping companies, um, or with landscaping companies have also been provided to ensure the business owners, operators and employees understood the requirements and how to comply. CD also, um, created a website, which is cityofsacramento.org-backsplashblowerban, which provides a copy of the ordinance, a link to the air quality index tool, um, found on the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality's website, a presentation outlining details of the ordinance and a link with, link to the frequently asked questions page. The FAQs were, uh, reviewed and drafted in partnership with the Sacramento Metro Air Quality District. The FAQs were provided in local chambers, offices, um, it was published in several local neighborhood publications. And as code enforcement is not able to immediately respond to complaints, but we do continue to follow up, uh, we do continue to outreach education and enforcement when it is absolutely necessary. Um, this concludes my update. I'm available after questions.
Thank you, Mr. Limos. Um, very good. Let's, let's see if there's public testimony, first of all.
Mayor, I have no, Mayor, I have no hands raised to make comments on this item.
Okay, then Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Shanir?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Peter, thank you very much for this update. Uh, you know, I've, I've continued to get a lot of complaints about leaf mo- blowers and of course, a lot of those are about sound irritation. Uh, some of it is about just ambient dust being blown up and the persistent nuisance related to leaf blowers. A lot of it, you're correct, has to do with using leaf blowers and the time that is regulated when they can't be used. And I know that it's very hard for code enforcement to enforce that aspect of the code because it's a transient use. By the time you get there, if there is a complaint, the people are long gone. And, uh, it's a persistent problem. The reason I brought this particular aspect of the ordinance forward is because of really climate change and the forest fires that we have had that caused severe air quality issues in our region. So it was a preventative measure. If we, and, and thankfully, we have not this year suffered from wildfire smoke. But you will remember a couple of years ago, it was dire. We had air quality index above three-hundred in Sacramento. And yet people continued to use leaf blowers. That's what this ordinance is all about. When we have extreme air quality issues, we really should not exacerbate the health catastrophe cau- caused by these fires and add to the load with leaf blowers. With the education that Peter and his crew have affected, I think it's been very effective to let, uh, the people know who make their living with these kinds of tools that there are days when they just simply can't use these implements and exacerbate the health problems that we're experiencing. So I appreciate that update very much. And, uh, believe me, the next time we have wildfire smoke in the area, we will appreciate this ordinance and code will be able to enforce it because it will be very clear that we have an air quality urgency and, uh, that we need to address. And now the education has been done and people cannot say that it was a surprise if they get a citation for, uh, using leaf blowers on days when their quality is really pretty terrible. Peter, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Shanir?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. Peter, on the.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. Peter, on the outreach that you did, whether it was the letters or local newspapers, was any of that translated and go into what languages? Yeah.
It was currently prepared in Spanish and English. And then, as we were doing outreach, anybody who needed additional translation, we would make that available, because we reached out to the actual businesses.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Gata.
No, thank you. Councilmember Shenier asked the principal question there, but I I actually would like to put some direction. If needed, this is to the city manager or our advocacy team. You know, the, I know that there are efforts in the legislature for funding the replacement for zero emission leaf blowers. And and you know, as I'm concerned a little bit about how much this industry is primarily a lot of Latino workers, and so the enforcement side of it, I want to make sure that we are doing the education. I think, Peter, thank you so much for the language access on it. But I'd like to make sure that our advocacy team is engaged and also on the rebate side. The, I know a lot of the air districts, when they have been able to get funding for it from the state, we can start rebate programs. And so I think it was Placer County that started one with the commercial the commercial side of the industry versus individuals on electric lawnmowers and the equipment. So, you know, this is two parts. One, asking our advocacy team that if it falls within our policy platform that we look at efforts to support measures where we in those who are doing business in the city of Sacramento can apply for those rebates. And then on the second, that we also look at, you know, how many, you know, how many, how we can actually create a commercial type of assistance program for the the businesses that are doing this, because it is, it is a demand, and I'd like to be able to support our local businesses who are who are engaged in this. Now, again, this is all particulates. So when the particulates are high, even if it's zero emission equipment, that's still putting particulates in the air. But still, that being the case, I think we're moving in the direction of moving two-stroke cycles is an important piece there. But I want to do it in a way where we're supporting the local businesses.
Good point. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much. Just kind of following up what my colleagues kind of stated. The only question that I have is a majority of the businesses that are involved with using a gas floor are very small, family-owned businesses. And sometimes they just don't get the information in the ways that we think we've done a great job on sending out the information. So my my question is, if in fact, a particular individual is using a gas floor, is it possible to give him an initial warning and have their name in the system? And on a subsequent one, issue a fine? So to make sure again that we're informing these business operators. Thank you.
Yes, and to answer that, the normally, since it's so transitory in use, the actual notice actually goes to the property owner or business operator, not the actual labor. Every business with that had a BOT license in the city of Sacramento received a copy of the rules and regulations, the FAQs in Spanish and Ang- and English. So as we go out, we make contact with the property owner and depend on them to get the information to their landscaper, since they're ultimately responsible. If we are doing proactive and we happen to see it, then we stop and talk to them. We actually hand them the copy of the FAQs.
Great, thank you very much. That answered my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Peter, for this update. This is something that I'm quite passionate about. When I worked for the legislature, I staffed the Assembly of Mindy in the California Resources Board, and we talked about this a lot in large part because his dad operated a landscaping company. And I think we often talk about this in the context of impact on the environment and nearby people, but the operators themselves are directly inhaling the the chemicals from these machines. And while we've improved the regulations, the same equipment that is used to test those, like in the field, is the same stuff we use to test cars, which is obviously priority. So they don't get tested that often. And when we do test them, we find that they're wildly out of compliance sometimes, which means someone's directly inhaling benzene and other chemicals, which leads to them getting really, really sick. So I know it's the policy of this council to not to not just ban leaf blowers in this equipment, and I understand why, because I know from an economic perspective to these business owners, you know, there's a lot of this equipment isn't designed to operate for twelve or fifteen hours continuously. I mean, there's still a long way to go on the zero emission equipment, but I am very supportive of what the Mayor Protem just said in terms of an assistance program. I would like to make sure that direction, Mayor Protem, because I know you sit on the air quality management board, and that board gets more your program funding, which is designed for this sort of purpose. I hope that if we're going to design a program as a city, we do it in partnership with the air district, since you can tap into those resources. I do really want us to do as much as we can to get these operators to stop operating this equipment, not just because it's disturbing to the bike riders and the folks walking by and the folks who are living and trying to work nearby, but also because it is actually incredibly unhealthy for those operators. And I know a lot of them are making the choice to operate that equipment, because it's more efficient, it goes further, it does more work than they get with brooms or get with electric equipment. But I do think we could try to ramp up our incentive side of things and would love to work with the air district to to try to make that more more effective and more widespread across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I really just wanted to thank Peter Leos. He has such a good job. And I noticed today when everybody's asking him all the questions we can think of to try to help. He's he's already done most of them, and so I just wanted to thank you, Peter. Really great job. You are an exemplary leader in the city of Sacramento. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you as well, Peter's important subject, and I love the way the council's trying to strike the right balance. Protect the environment and at the same time assure that that small business, people, diversity, people, diverse communities stay in business. So thank you. All right, anything else on this item? No, then we go to the last item of the evening, and this is the Arden Way project. Again, what is the context? What is the context of this item? Danielle Foster is back. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council. I'm Danielle Foster, your Housing Policy Manager. I'm going to bring up a presentation, and we'll be presenting with some folks from Bridge, as well as we have some state representatives to speak as well. So before you tonight is the discussion on the city's parcels at four ninety and four ninety-two Arden Way and the recommendation for an exempt surplus process under the, for the Affordable Housing Project with Bridge. The two parcels that the city owns total about point one four acres, shown here on the map next to the state surplus parcel that's a little over an acre. As you can see here, it's at the corner of Arden and Oxford with limited access and and a very small, irregular-sized parcel. Existing on these parcels is about a two thousand square foot building. It's the former North Sacramento Chamber Building. While it's not of historical value, there is a recommendation from our staff that it would be nice to have a plaque included on its future development, just to commemorate its history as a site. But we see this as a great opportunity for the use of these parcels that have been sitting underutilized and vacant due to deferred maintenance accessibility because of the age of the building and just the challenges for retrofit. In order to use these parcels for office space, it would be at least two hundred fifty thousand and up to a million if it was to be a community space. So with this limited size of property and its challenges, we're excited for this potential opportunity to combine it with the state parcel to address some local needs. The value of the property, when looking at the cost of demolition, it could be a loss, it could be maybe up to a seventy thousand dollar value, recognizing that any uses of the property at highest and best would likely demolish that building in order to fully utilize its potential. So under the State Surplus Act, we are allowed as a public agency to surplus the property and provide it to another public agency as an exempt process, which streamlines the transfer of the property. And so the recommendation before you would be to transfer the property to the state used for the purposes of affordable housing. While we've heard that there's some public interest in these parcels by the neighborhood, that would trigger the Surplus Land Act, and we would have to go through the same process we've gone through. For example, like we did with the Fong Ranch process, prioritizing affordable housing first under state law and reaching out to affordable housing developers, which would likely bring us to the same place we're at tonight. So we're excited that this could streamline that process and provide the opportunity to meet these needs. So to highlight the the needs that could be met by these parcels being added to the project, it would include twenty affordable housing units, as well as the childcare component for the project. So when looking at our local housing needs, we know we have great housing needs. We've been talking about this today. But just to put some numbers around that, as part of our gaps analysis, we know that we need at least five thousand more permanent supportive housing units. This would provide thirty-one of those and sixteen thousand seven hundred affordable units over our arena housing period through twenty twenty-nine. And then on the childcare side, we know that in District Two, there's at least ten thousand children in the ages zero to four range, and there's only about twenty-five hundred licensed childcare spaces within that area. So adding to that childcare service capacity really helps with addressing that need and helping with the overall ability for the district to continue to engage in new workforce opportunities and training opportunities. So I'm going to pass it over to John McCall with Bridge Housing to continue to talk about the project.
Thank you, Danielle, and thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for your time. So I was here four weeks ago to talk about this, when we were asking for your approval to apply for state funding for the project. But I'm glad to have a little time to talk about the project as you vote on this land transfer. So first, just a real quick intro to Bridge Housing. Danielle, if you go to the next slide. So we are a nonprofit affordable housing developer. We were founded in San Francisco almost forty years ago. We now work across the state and have quite a long history in Sacramento. In addition to building affordable housing, we also manage and own our, most of our buildings long-term, as we would do here. And so we view ourselves as sort of long-term neighbors and community members everywhere we work, and we try to hold ourselves accountable to the communities that we're going to be in for the long term after we've come into them. On the next slide, I have a sort of high-level overview of the project's timeline, what has happened to date. In April of twenty twenty-one, we were awarded control for the site from the state of California after submitting a proposal to them. And after some initial due diligence, environmental review, we've been sort of launching what we hope will be a years-long and comprehensive community engagement campaign that started with a project website where we've hosted over two hundred interactions with neighbors. But we've also had four community meetings, two in-person and two via Zoom. The last of those was two weeks ago. And what we've tried to do throughout all of that is to sort of continue to share information about our proposal, answer questions, hear feedback from our neighbors, and and genuinely incorporate that into the designs of the building. So I thought, because I know in our last discussion, there were questions about how we're responding to community feedback, I might just share a few themes that we've already incorporated to date, and we plan to continue that for years to come. So the first is around parking. We spoke about this last time. Here you can see a site plan for the first floor overlaid on the site. When we initially proposed this development to the state of California, it was for a hundred and twenty-four units, with sixty-seven parking spaces underneath them. We heard from our neighbors loud and clear, and also from council members, that that was not enough parking. People were concerned about, you know, overflow into the streets around the the project. And so we are committed to increasing that to at least a hundred spaces dedicated for the residents of this building. We've also been working with the City Council, a number of different offices of you all, who I know we've spoken to over the past few weeks. And one of the ideas that's come up through that process was to add EV car sharing onsite, so that if you're a household that may have no car or one, and you're thinking about buying a second, you you don't necessarily need to, because you have access to a vehicle right next to your door, and in fact, a zero emission EV. In addition to that, we've also been working with the city's Parking Enforcement Division with Matt Ironman and Ursula Johnson there, who have been a huge help in in offering to collaborate with us and and manage parking, both at our site but also surrounding the streets nearby, to ensure that there aren't these overflow concerns we've heard from our neighbors. And then in addition to that, we're planning on providing on-site bicycle storage and transit passes to everybody that moves into this building. The next theme that we've heard from neighbors and from council members relates to traffic at this site. So, you know, we we've heard from neighbors that this could lead to significant delays in the nearby intersections. We've committed to, and it just kicked off a traffic study, so that we can better understand that question and respond to any suggested mitigations. And we're also working with the City Transportation Division and SACRT to try to improve any traffic issues that may arise nearby us. In recent conversations with the city's traffic engineers, we've actually heard that there's less concern about delays at the nearby intersections. They they feel that the volume of traffic that's going to be added here would be able to move through intersections nearby within a single light cycle. So we're hoping that's the case, but we're still continuing with the traffic study, so that we can make sure that's the case and respond if not. And one of the other things that we've heard from our neighbors is concerns, because a local community group called the Woodlake Neighborhood Association have limited access to what used to be their community meeting space called the Woodlake Clubhouse. It's now been dedicated for a childcare center. We are already planning in the first floor of this development. It's hard to see here, but to build a roughly sixteen hundred square foot community building, or or sorry, community room, that's sort of a flexible community meeting space. Thank you, Danielle. And we're excited to offer that to that neighborhood group, so that they could host their monthly meetings within the first floor of our building. It comes at a small cost to us, but we think it's a great opportunity to help out nearby need and also for our future residents to hopefully engage and get to know our neighbors. And then the last area that we've heard from our neighbors relates to the size of the building, that this is a five-story building that we've proposed and are working on with the state, and they're concerned about the impact of that from a visual perspective. So we're seeing what we can do from a design perspective, and one of the things we're exploring, you see here, is a sort of visual impact study with our architect. So it's a little hard to orient yourself, but the yellow arrow in the left side of the screen, that's the two nearest homes to our site. And on the top right, you see what this would look like from the two nearest homes at the street level, and then the bottom right, if you were fifty feet above the nearest home. And what you see is, thanks to the very mature trees around and in Woodlake Park, actually, you can't really see this building at all, even at five stories from from the nearest home. You can sort of see it just poking out above the trees if you're fifty feet above that. The other place that we've looked at is from the nearby Sheriff's and Police Memorial, just to our west. Again, the really mature trees surrounding the park and the building, all of which we're proposing to keep in our current designs, help to sort of soften the visual impact, even though it is a larger building than we see nearby. And then we're continuing to sort of refine refine our designs based on feedback we receive from neighbors. This is a fairly recent design that was updated based on feedback from neighbors that they wanted to see something that reflected the art deco influences from the surrounding neighborhood. We're going to continue to do what we can every way we we can to sort of honestly incorporate feedback here. This is one recent idea I just wanted to uplift. Anyway, I'll happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll I'll pass it back to Danielle, and thank you for your time. I just want.
Thanks, John. Staff's happy to answer any questions. We also have Megan Kirkaby, a deputy director with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the state of California, who's here to speak.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Let's hear from the members of the public now, and I see you have how many callers, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have seventeen hands raised at this point.
Okay, let's hear from the public, please.
The first hand raised is Elaine.
Hi, my name is Elaine, and I am asking the, all this council to look at actually this property here, because this is a historical property in Woodlake. They've already been taking systematically properties, rec spaces, and parks away from District Two. Please look out for District Two. I would also ask that the council members, before they vote, come out and meet with us to actually look at these streets. These streets are extremely narrow. Right across from the park, there is no sidewalks. The next street over, there's no sidewalks. The next street from that, there is only one sidewalk. It's ridiculous that anybody would think this is okay to put children in the street walking to school, because that's where they'll walk to school from. This is not being planned well, and please, I'm asking the council members, if you care. This is not being planned well and please, I'm asking the council members, if you care about communities. To please come out and meet with our Armory Committee. We just want to show you. The next thing is, this project is way too big. Their plan is to have thirty-two parking spaces down the street from this project. Four blocks away. Who do you know that walks four blocks? There will be parking for the park there, the community park, but this park is going to fill up. The community is no longer going to be able to use it because people will be temporarily parking their visitors and friends of the people who live there. It is way too big. The next thing I'd like to say is, these projects that you guys are putting all over District Two. Four of them within point eight acres is, does not pay park fees at all. We are losing park space. We're losing the quality of our lives there. Please, I'm asking every single council person to please come out and meet with the Armory Committee. So that we can show you before you decide to vote on this. This is very important to a community. It should be very important to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is a phone number, four three six six. Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert and anytime that I hear. Any part of District Two discussing anything, I'm very familiar with District Two. Because my parents moved here in nineteen forty-six and as I grew older and moved away and then moved back. I believe District Two is one of the most gerrymandered districts probably in California. I won't even go outside the state. And anytime that I hear, and I'm talking about a native, anytime I hear. Anyone mention that Woodlake Park is a park, I dispute that. Why? It's a baseball field with no bathroom. I don't even know if they have any water to drink there. And I rode by there recently. And if you look at what they call a meeting area or whatever they call it. It looks like a tough shed to me. Now, if you go back down Marysville Boulevard and take a look at Hagenwood Community Center and Hagenwood Park. That's a park. As a matter of fact, I noticed recently they did some facelift work on it. And they have the Grand High School Pacers colors, blue and gold. So I personally don't think Woodlake should get any money for what they call a park. The money should go to Hagenwood Community Center and Hagenwood Park. That's a park. If you want to go really see a park, that's a park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Pat Sayer Handley.
Hi, I've lived in D Two for over thirty years and I support maintaining four ninety-two. That's the old library as a public building. I walk by it every day. And I'm reminding the city that to dispose of property according to their own rules, there has to be notification to public. And Park and Recreation Districts and notice of interest has to be allowed within sixty days. I don't think this deserves an exemption. Because right now, the small library can fulfill the needs for the youth in our neighborhood. There is drug dealing going on in Woodlake Park. And I think that the old library is a perfect place to have an anti-drug program. We have no senior facilities in D Two. For seniors. I think that right now, it should not be a giveaway to. Of our public amenity without following the proper procedures. A plaque is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kristen Perry.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's Kristen Perry. First of all, I just want to state that I do support affordable housing at this location. However, as I've stated before, I think it's too large as proposed. My issue is, is the quality of life for people moving in. Adding another twenty units, which I know is an agenda or priority for the city to add affordable housing and it is for me too. But at already a hundred and twenty-four units, I'm confused if it's a hundred units then, if we don't do this, or a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and forty-four. You know, this building does have, you know, use as a green space or as a little community center. Something innovative, you know, solar panels or something else other than more units on top of an already dense project. You know, we've been working with Bridge, but this last presentation, I'm sorry. But this is the last thing you presented a month ago without any community input. I had tons of questions about water-wise gardens, solar panels, you know, taking off this and that, just improving the quality of life for people moving in there. This discussion is not about opposing affordable housing. This is about having affordable housing that's livable. If you've looked at lumberjack property recently above a gas station, you're going to be worried, let me tell you. I realize this is a city-owned property transferred to the state. But I think what Bridge is trying to do is add more units on top of an already dense building where they haven't planned enough parking already. And now they're taking away parking from a retail space and saying, oh, nobody wants the retail space. And then saying, oh, RT Parking, they don't need that. It's overflow. Well, I'm telling you, it was full before COVID happened. So you know what? Remember when McDonald's supersized everything and then they realized it wasn't good for the health of the people? Well, this is the same thing. Don't supersize. Take it off the menu. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kendra Noel Lewis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Dear Mayor Steinberg and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the executive director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance and we are, I'm calling in this evening to support. The city-owned property reference as exempt surplus land pursuant to the California Land Act and transfer the property. To facilitate the development of affordable housing by the Bridge Housing Corporation. This is what a pro-housing city distinction does. You lead by example and you create more affordable housing to get people off the street. We need people in housing not focusing on parking spaces. The city is facing an unprecedented affordable housing crisis and must bring every tool and resource to bear in addressing this emergency. The state has dedicated surplus state property to transform this site into a new housing community for a hundred and twenty-four families. Imagine a hundred and twenty-four women and children being off the street in safe, clean, affordable housing. The rental homes will be affordable for housing. We support the city. We support the city by dedicating this land and will ensure affordable rental community can be built. And provide opportunities to support critical amenities and services for residents. These actions also support and implement a number of the city's housing element goals and strategies. Keep leading the way. We recognize the city's leadership and dedication to addressing critical affordable housing needs and support. For building permanent supportive housing as the ultimate solution to homelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dan Allison.
Good evening. I support the transfer of the property to the state for use as affordable housing. Sacramento desperately needs more affordable housing and this is a great site for it. It's right next to the Light Rail Station. It would be hard to find a better place for affordable housing than next to transit. I don't believe that neighborhood associations should have veto power over affordable housing that is needed by the entire city. And that's what they're asking for is veto authority. I don't believe that that's fair or appropriate for the rest of the city of Sacramento. So I hope that all the council members will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jane McCauley.
My name is Jane McCauley. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of North Sacramento. I support maintaining four ninety-two as expanded park space. Mr. Loloie requested at a city council meeting to remove this property from surplus. At that meeting, the mayor commented that Mr. Loloie may be confused and he disallowed his request. Ms. Frishy just then spoke up from economic development and said that she would walk him through it. I followed up with an email to her and she confirmed that yes, it was removed from surplus by Mr. Loloie. And I got my answer on that. D Two residents want to know from our councilman and maybe he can get the information from the city attorney. Number one, why was the four ninety-two specifically designated exempt surplus? Instead of simply surplus, which would have required more outreach and communication with the community. Was it a land use? Was it land use restricted? Was it contaminated? What was it? Number two, we would like to see the land use restrictions regarding this property. Number three, and lastly, has the city consulted with the group that donated this property to the city of Sacramento before the annexation of North Sacramento? As you know, the community has requested via letter to use this building as expanded park space. We have four projects approved within blocks of this park and our park space is being reduced again and a population is increasing. The Armory and the library are not ripe for housing. It's ripe for expanded parks, more trees to help with the bad air. And as far as the childcare goes, you guys took away Woodlake Clubhouse for childcare. They have two to five children enrolled in that program. So is there a need for childcare? That is to be debated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Daniel Savala, Executive Director of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership and North Sacramento resident. You know, change is difficult. You know, it really feels, it's disappointing to have this debate and recognize that. We're going to have this same debate over and over again over the next ten years as the future of Del Paso Boulevard is. Housing near light rail stations. That is the will of statewide blueprint for sustainable development. It is part of our general plan and it is the driving force that's going to revitalize Del Paso Boulevard and Arden Way. As an economic and retail corridor. We desperately need housing development along Del Paso Boulevard and Arden Way. One, because there's a tremendous need for housing. And more importantly, affordable housing. There's also a tremendous need for customers and an economic base to sustain businesses along Del Paso Boulevard. This project in itself, the numbers that we're looking at now project up to sixteen thousand dollars a month. Excuse me, a year per household and additional disposable income due to savings and rent. It's a tough project. Bridge Housing has been a pretty consistent project management. Consistent group. I look forward to continue to working with them on behalf of the business owners and residents of North Sacramento. And with that, I urge you to let them move forward to approve this item tonight and let them continue to do the work that they've been doing. With neighbors from throughout North Sacramento. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ansel Lundberg.
Yes, hi. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I am a District Five or District Seven resident now. I'm a House Sacramento member. I'm also calling in support of this item, which is a critical action to finish this excellent project at four forty Arden Way. We need more housing in Sacramento, particularly affordable housing near transit, and this gets us over a hundred units closer to that. This kind of project will help directly to reduce the risk of people falling into unsheltered homelessness. This should be a simple action tonight since this project is nearly fully approved and entitled already. I also just want to comment on those speaking against this project. My fellow members of House Sacramento have dealt with these folks before. Even before efforts on the general plan update a couple of years ago. We've seen them fight tooth and nail to quote-unquote protect their Woodlake neighborhood from even the idea of having to share their amenities with poor people. You can read their ecomments tonight. There's some truly disgusting words in there that they should be ashamed of. They simply want to continue to exclude anyone who is not like them. I will say this is not representative of most Woodlake residents. We know plenty folks in Woodlake who are supporting this project. And other affordable housing in this area. Finally, the developer Bridge has, I believe, done an excellent job in community outreach and has. Heard from those who will be their neighbors, including adding more parking, which honestly I believe was a mistake, but. That just shows their commitment to making meaningful changes to the project. So I believe this should be an easy vote tonight. Either you are with the obstructionists from Woodlake. Or you support affordable housing and a way out of our housing and homelessness crises. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ronnie Shaw.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Ronnie Shaw. I'm representing several community associations that have. Longstanding involvement within District Two regarding their. Need to preserve four ninety-two Arden. The fact that Bridge people say there's no historical value shows that they have not spoken to community. Because the property has immense historical value. It was a public library up until nineteen eighty-seven. It was a space for job seekers to have resources and other community services. It's part of a park that services not only the privileged Woodlake community as people think. But the entire neighborhood, the entire disenfranchised neighborhood. Has access to that park and it's our only green space, so we need to preserve it. Speaking of Del Paso Boulevard and the revitalization, people who are struggling financially don't support. Retail. They don't have the disposable income to do that. We need to think about low-density housing, mixed housing, to develop a real economic base for the area. And maintain our historical legacies through these properties like four ninety-two Arden Way, expanded parks. And you know, the fact that. Bridge keeps saying they've heard from neighbors. You know, it just shows that so many have called in saying otherwise. So you guys need to take pause. Maybe meet with the Armory people and then have some discussions afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is P.
You know, it's interesting that the P bid director states that housing is the driving force to refit. To finalize the Boulevard corridor. Housing is a fix for the failure of the P bid leadership over time. To support existing businesses and attract more. This historic corridor is simply being dismantled. You know, the annexation with unkept promises, you know, Councilmember Harris said he believes in. Promises and standing to those. Well, there were a lot of promises that were made with this annexation that simply has not happened. Right? I mean, I understand how you come to this resolve to take. An opportunity to expand park spaces and green spaces in an area that is already deemed inadequate. You know, another gentleman called and he said that he disputes that it is a park. I mean, that is simply insulting to the entire district. The park does not belong to Woodlake. He said it looks like a tough shed. I mean, that is how we value the things in our community. Neighborhood associations are veto power. Associations are simply. Careers and homeowners that have pulled together to try to make a difference. So to minimize their importance is simply unacceptable and all council members should not. Support that kind of rhetoric against your constituents. I mean, this is ridiculous. I believe that you should take a pause, take a look and come up with a master plan for future development for District Two. You owe that to North Sacramento, which in the general plan, it also states that parks.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
It states that parks and amenities.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I got a question for City Councilman Loloie. He'll probably oppose this. Come up with options if you don't like this plan. Plus, if this plan passes, would it have accessibility for like the homeless population? And also, would County Choice voucher? And also would take county choice vouchers? Because we've got a lot of people in Sacramento that have a voucher, but they can't find a place to live. I'm going to support this plan, but we need this plant, this housing is like a drop in a Pacific Ocean. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Stuart Gao.
Hi there. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm a resident of District Two. There, there's a lot of good people in Woodlake who support this project. There's a lot of good people in Woodlake who oppose this project. I think it's perfectly normal for people to be concerned about what's being built around them. You know, the name-calling and the demonizing and bullying of engaged residents is, is pretty appalling. So there's been some callers who have been, you know, doing exactly that. The Sacramento B has been guilty of that. And I think, you know, we should all question authority and be engaged. And I, I, and that's what people are doing. And that's, that's democracy. That's how this is supposed to work. And that's what makes this country great. So, you know, if you're for affordable housing, I, I, you know, I get that, but you know, people are allowed to have different opinions on, on, on what makes the world a better place. And people speaking about Woodlake Park, Woodlake Park is, is largely used by the surrounding communities. The playground is largely used by surrounding communities. And yeah, bathrooms would be great. A better park would be great. These are some of the poorest, most underserved communities in, in Sacramento. And this project, the location of this project is going to deny them access to the park. You know, and they need the park. Councilmember Harris recognized that this is a questionable location for a project at this scale. I mean, I could support affordable housing and, and supportive housing at this location if it was a little bit smaller and a bit more innovative around uh, uh, transit oriented development. You know, I would like to see more RT riders there and I'd like to see more electric vehicles.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I, I really hope the city council considers giving
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Louis Morante.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Louis Morante. I'm calling another one of the YIMBs from House Sacramento in support of this project. You know, I think a lot of my friends on the call have already said it much better than me. You know, in particular, I think Ms. Lewis's point about how Sacramento has already earned correctly. So a statewide reputation for being a pro housing city. We are often held up as a community that is doing all that we can to help folks here who are struggling, to help homeless people to build housing. It's obviously not been enough. We need to do more. But I would hate for our city to lose that reputation of leadership that it's rightfully earned by taking a step backward. I think the city's been a great partner with the state in trying to get this specific project done. I strongly support everything we can do to get it moving. And I, I just really think it's really actually quite concerning that there is any opposition to an affordable housing project on city council, especially in this city. We have so many needs. The PIT count, which just came out today, recorded that in Sacramento County homelessness has doubled in the last three years. We have a legitimate crisis on our hands. It's not a crisis of if there's enough parking. It's not even a crisis of if there's enough park space important that, though that may, that may be. We have a housing crisis on our hands. And any action that moves to, to favor that housing crisis, to make it worse, to deny housing, to disapprove, especially affordable housing, is not progressive and as one of the last two callers mentioned, should not be valorized in the democratic process. It makes the world worse. So I strongly urge you to support this project, to approve the transfer and do all you can, continue to do all you can to maintain Sacramento's pro housing designation and leadership and reputation in the state. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Sacramento Low Rider Commission. Sacramento Low Rider Commission, if you'll unmute. Next speaker is Karen. Karen, if you'll unmute. I'll go to the next speaker, Manny Lars. Manny Lars?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is, my name is Manuel Lars. And I am the president of the Woodlake Neighborhood Association. And I am rising to not support the passing of four ninety-two. I write to urge upon you the importance of maintaining a valuable cultural and historical resource in the, in our Woodlake community. In this time of development needs, demand immediate response. It is often far too easy to overlook the cultural gems that once blew life into the soul of our city. One such icon is four ninety-two Arden Library, the library location. The old Arden Library has until recently served the community of Woodlake as a place where knowledge, intrigue, imagination could be pursued. The building, though dilapidated now, served with importance as a, as a company's safe place to retreat when intellectual priding needed to be satiated or for those overachievers in our community who needed to be inspired. The library was the place where countless ideas took shape. Hard decisions were made and some regrettable consequences were worked out and mitigated. To this day, the old Arden Library serves as a constant visual reminder of a time where fond memories were formed and, and, and keeps us focused on what the Woodlake community was, is, and aspires to be. The asset you will do with everything within your power to keep this space just that. A foundational community resource where once again the ideas, intrigues, and ambitions of the new, old, young, and experienced can once again find retreat and inspiration. We are, we need to save this space. It's a decent compromise to an, an overdeveloped concept that is not well thought out, that's going to bring, bring powerless, power, less powerful families to a place where drug dealing happens, making them vulnerable to, to, um, to intimidation. The place would be better used as a senior living, but please keep
Thank you for your comments. Your time is compute, complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, please keep four ninety-two a community space.
Thank you. Karen, if you'd like to speak on this item, please unmute. Mayor, it appears I have no more speakers on this item.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much to the members of the public for calling in and weighing in. Let's hear from the members, begin with the District Councilmember, Councilmember LoLoy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I, I, I'd like to thank the Bridge Housing representative for their interaction with the community. And also the city staff, in particular Daniel Fosters, for making herself available to the few meetings that we've had, that they've had with the, with the, the community. With that said, based on the recommendation of staff that was part of this agenda today, I received an email with some questions and seems like the community has over thirty questions, but I'm not going to go through that, all these thirty questions. So I would like to ask, if possible, if we can hold on making a decision on this particular location until we come back from recess, where some of these questions can be answered by somewhat Bridge Housing and some with the, the city staff action. I don't think we're on a, on a time sensitive timeline right now. But again, I think just hearing the community as a whole, I think there's some good movement that has taken place. Again, thanks to Bridge Housing and just listening to the community. And I think it would be great if this particular address can also be addressed with the community. So we can fill out some of those holes or answer some of those questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. You know, I, and I'll, oh, let you resume, of course, a minute. I, I forgot to introduce Megan Kirkaby, the Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development, who's on the line and wanted to speak. And without objection, I'd like to give her the opportunity to, to, to weigh in here on behalf of the state of California, who is the, the driver behind this project. Kirkaby, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Well, I apologize for not getting you up there earlier.
Oh, no, no problem. I, I didn't want to, I, I thought I might have messed up, so.
You did not. I messed up.
Excuse me. Um, I'll, I'll just say, you know, I think someone else said this, but I understand change is hard. But you are a, a pro housing city and I will say in my career, I see very few projects that should be as easy to support as this one. We are talking about a space surrounded by green space on three sides. There is going to be no loss of park access. This in fact is going to increase access to that open space for a community. You're looking at extremely tough homelessness numbers. And if we aren't able to say yes to a hundred and twenty-four units here, you know, frankly, this was also mentioned, but um, I, I, I would like to say more housing than this. And I know that can be a terrifying thing, but um, this is exactly where you want to see it. We're talking about a former armory. Uh, we're talking about no loss of the green space. We're talking about sitting on the light rail. Um, we're talking about, yes, project-based vouchers being in this project and addressing that homelessness issue. Childcare that's so desperately needed coming out of COVID. We're also talking about the neighborhood of Woodlake, you know, that was, once was formerly only open to white households. Um, this is part of your duty to affirmatively further fair housing as a city is saying yes to projects like this that are going to create more, more access to communities. And I understand Del Paso as a whole is not the same as Woodlake. But, but this, I encourage you to look at the Google map, to look at where this development is located. Um, to, to look at the things that Bridge has shared with you on their website as well. Um, but I don't see this coming a lot, long very often. I wouldn't want to be the reason we had to say no to one more family that's going to be on the waitlist for this housing. And I'm sure that that waitlist will be incredibly long. Um, so I appreciate the calls for more parking. Um, I, I, I would prefer to keep, keep the, the housing at a hundred and twenty-four units and not, not replace that with more, more car spaces. So I, I, I would thank you if you are willing to bring this piece of city land um, in, in with this state land to make this broader project happen. That, that's all. But thank you very much for the time, Mayor.
You missed Kirkaby. Really appreciate it. Let's get back to the members of the city council. Councilmember LoLoy, do you want to continue?
Uh, I, I greatly appreciate it and it's a pleasure seeing you again, Megan. I, I just wanted to clarify something with the statement that you made, Megan. I think there might be some misunderstanding. There's no difference between Del Paso and Woodlake. If you look at their income bracket, you don't see that huge of a difference. And I think it's really wrong to consider Woodlake as a history, as a one-time of a predominantly white neighborhood. I think labeling a community that is literally predominantly today, black and brown, which is part of my district, it's just not right to label people that way. These are very hardworking people. And if you look at their income in that area, it's nothing that you would consider that they're trying to separate themselves. So I just want to, I would appreciate it if in the future we don't label communities because already we've seen via social media and what have you, some of that bullying that takes place. And we, we need to stop that. So thank you so much. And by the way, great seeing you again. You know, one of the questions is, you know, within the staff report, the question is what economic opportunity is the four ninety-two Arden Way exempt surplus property for Bridge Housing Affordable Housing Project bringing specifically to the residents and voters of District Two?
As outlined in the staff report and the presentation, the public benefit is in bringing the housing and the childcare services, which we think from an economic perspective, the childcare services definitely support workers in the district. And by providing affordable housing, as was relayed by the Business Improvement District, we're providing affordable rents so that people have expendable income along the Boulevard to continue development of housing to support the businesses in the area.
Great. Another question is what property tax will be collected? Where will it go? How will it benefit people of District Two? History has shown us, just look at cannabis, that property tax that's generated in our community never comes back to our community. What will the city collect on this proposed project? And how will it come back to the District Two community for things that we, the people prioritize?
I mean, as public agencies, these are existing exempt property tax parcels and they will continue to be existing exemptions. But again, I would point more towards the sales tax and infusing more income into the district that can be used along the corridor.
Okay, because I think that, that was a, a statement that was stated in the staff report. So that's probably where we got the question.
Would you like me to speak to your earlier question about timing?
Yes.
So there are state funding rounds that are continuing. I know at our last meeting, we spoke about the matching grant funds. That, that application was required at the end of May. But the Supernova, which is the state's action towards combining a, a bunch of different funding sources into one application, is due July twelfth. So that's why we're here tonight. As you recall, we were talking about, we had previously planned to come on the twenty-first, but with the budget hearings had pushed it to the twenty-eighth. So we are to the end of our deadline. We have been communicating with the neighbors since the beginning of the year. So it's been, you know, it started with the P bid and then the Woodlake Neighborhood Association since March. So there have been several community meetings, but I just wanted to give you a sense of timeline and why we're here tonight.
Great. And is it, one other question that I have is, so this particular project doesn't need any kind of funding from the city? Am I, am I correct on that?
Well, there's been
As I said, they have a lot of questions on this and I've been getting an email, so I'm just addressing this question.
Yeah, great. Um, they're still in application processes as, as just mentioned, they'll still be applying July twelfth. We are happy to announce that the project did receive the matching grant funds award notification today. And John, can you remind me, is that five million, six million? Anyway, there was an award made today.
That's right. It's five point seven million.
So with this, all these wonderful awards, again, is this from one of our council meetings? It was indicated that this project is not going to need any gap financing from the city. I just want to, can, can we confirm that? Yes or no?
So Councilmember, I'm happy to speak to that. What I would say is that's, that's our hope and that's our intention. And that's the application we're submitting on July twelfth would be for sort of all remaining gap financing from the state with the exception of tax credits, which we would then apply for in twenty twenty-three. So all of these are competitive applications and we'll, we'll have to see, you know, if we put our best foot forward, if we're successful. But at the moment, that's our strategy and the award Danielle mentioned that we received today helps us towards that goal. We, we do plan, I know Councilmembers Ashby and Harris had questions about whether we would be working with SHRA at all um, through this project. And we are planning to work with SHRA, even if we don't apply for additional funding from the city as the bond issuer for the project, which allows us to sort of ensure we're involved in the local government and, and staying within Sacramento's sort of standard processes for these types of projects.
Great. I appreciate it. How is the city of Sacramento Bridge Housing and DGS defining a demonstrated affordable housing need? Need existing in District Two? Let's talk about it tonight before you vote because District Two has more than our fair share. How you looked at the housing authority data? Have you looked at the housing authority data in comparison to other areas in the city? We demand and deserve this answer. What is your rationale? Don't shoot the messenger, please. I think this goes back to probably you, Daniel. I don't know. It's probably city staff that.
The fair share, it's the fair share question. It's a, go ahead, please.
I, I think it's fair to say that we're pursuing affordable housing throughout the city. And so we've got projects I, I think it's fair to say that we're pursuing affordable housing throughout the city, and so we've got projects happening in, in all the districts. This is one of the sites that is coming through the state surplus property process, but there have been, there's a prior site that was downtown in District Four, there's, there's future sites coming online, there's a future site in District Four. In addition to the sites that we're working with through Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and Home Key that are throughout the city, so I recognize that there are affordable housing units being built in D2, but I, we are pursuing affordable housing on all fronts, and I think that's fair to see when you think about the six hundred and forty-four units going into construction this month, it was throughout the city, um, in a, in a variety of projects. So I think we're doing it on all fronts.
Uh, uh, great, thank you. But I guess the question was, compared to other areas, wh- when you look at the numbers in District Two versus other areas, have you seen that number and where does District Two fall in?
I, I don't know the breakdown off the top of my head.
And are you, Councilmember Lowey, I think, um, what, what is your baseline here? Are you asking for the, the demographics of the, the, all the neighborhoods of the city for housing that has existed or preexisted? Are you asking about new development? Danielle Foster, by the way, I think does a fabulous job in this city. I think we all do, or we all think that.
Yeah, no doubt.
Is helping us, let me finish if I might, is helping us find every opportunity throughout the entire city to build as much workforce and affordable housing as possible. And as she said, I, I, I looked at the numbers, we, we produced more in two thousand and twenty-two than we, than we ever have. I- it's in the four figures, it's in the thousands. And it's distributed throughout the entire city. That's new development. But I, you know, I, I, I think as the representative for District Two, you can, you could find out in your own district what, what the, what your inventory is. But we're building throughout the entire city as we have to. Look at the point in time count. Look at the Rena numbers, look at the need. I mean, there are too many people without that a place to live.
No, that's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I don't think anybody's.
So I didn't mean to interrupt you, so please, please.
And, and, and I think, you know, this is from folks reading what was, uh, written in the staff reports, so some of these had questions have come up. Is Mr. City Manager, are you on here?
I, I am.
Sorry. Can you speak to the anticip- because we've heard this a lot today? Can you speak to the anticipated sales tax increase, uh, which is the economic benefit of, um, projects like this to a community?
I, I think it depends on what ultimately gets, uh, built out. Now, we could certainly get that number back to you, but we, I don't think, uh, unless Danielle, we've done this on the, in the background here, we've not calculated uh, the, the sales tax growth based on this project, have we?
We haven't. The P-Bid noted about sixteen thousand dollars a year per resident was their estimation. I, I don't have the data for those numbers, but.
Danielle, with all due respect to P-Bid, um, they, they do not have that information. They never have had that information. And it's literally throwing a number in the dark. I wish I could say that their, their numbers are accurate and valid, but unfortunately, uh, those numbers are just thrown out, um, off the cuff. So, um, I, I think it's, you know, projects like this that are gonna be such a huge, uh, economic boost, it'd be nice to find out, you know, what is it that, you know, how does that increase, um, that economic boost, especially with the businesses? I think that the public has the right to know this, because ultimately, more business means more job, uh, availability, which that's how we can kind of, it's a win-win situation. So i- it would be very nice, um, to have those numbers, so we can share with the public to say, this is the amount of money that's coming back to an area that's an, has an average income of about, I wanna say about twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand a year? So again, going back, the, this district, it's, it's twenty-one communities, and their base income is roughly about the same, so we can't really pinpoint one, one area to the next. So, um, again, I have more questions, but I don't wanna waste everybody's time on this. But some of these questions were valid. Unfortunately, I don't think we got the answers, uh, to all of them. But rest assured, nobody is, um, arguing about the needing of a project like this. I think the biggest concern is, what is the strategy after this project? Because we can't just build this and say, okay, we're done. Have we looked at what's gonna happen after this? What kind of opportunities is it gonna bring to the table? And what are the, some of the things that's gonna take away, uh, uh, from a, a district? And, and I would appreciate it if we just don't say Woodlake, this is District Two, this is North Sacramento. And it's, it's very, very shameful when, um, you have callers or writers that refer to this district as NIMBYs. That just merely tells this community that you have no idea about District Two, and you have not even gone through it to wanna be able to tag the people. Again, I think there is a lot of questions, um, to be asked, answered regarding this transaction. And, um, I would ask if this can be postponed without damaging any potential funding that you can get, if that can come back, you know, when we come back from recess. I think we owe that, uh, to the members of the, at least members of the district or residents of the district. Let me remind you, a very struggling, um, uh, district, and that's economically. A district that has the highest unemployment rate and highest crime rate. And a district that has the highest businesses closing down. So with that, again, I would ask this to be postponed if it's not gonna hurt the grants. And, um, I hope that, well, colleagues, you've heard the community and you've heard their questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowey. Let's, I, I have Councilmember Vang, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Ashby up on the, up on the board. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Danielle and John, first, I just wanna say thank you so much for your thorough presentation. And John, I also just wanna say I really appreciate you holding several listening sessions with the community and really trying to incorporate what you can from what you heard from the residents to ensure that, um, you can meet their needs. Um, I was a little surprised, though, cuz I know as a city, we're actually committed to reducing miles vehicle travel within the city. So it was a little surprising to me that we added more, uh, parking spots. But I appreciate you trying to meet folks halfway, um, and I do appreciate the EV sharing on, onsite that you mentioned, uh, um, in the presentation. So that did make me feel a little bit better. I didn't have an opportunity to speak with staff directly and also Public Works, and they did share with me that they didn't have any concerns regarding traffic on the site. The site is also adjacent to Light Rail, a bus stop. Um, and I've also spoken to staff about this, and I know that they are committed to any ongoing engagement to address any concerns, issues, or adjustment. For me, at the end of the day, um, we just need more housing in the city. There are so many families in District Two, and even in District Eight. And I would say across the city that needs more housing, especially more affordable housing, um, and the childcare component. We all know affordable housing is based on income, right? That means it allows families to actually pay what they can afford and have additional income to invest back in their families, and I would even say, Councilmember Lowely, even in District Two. Um, I know you have asked, you asked, um, Danielle, how is this going to help the community, um, and the small businesses? I think that's a really valid question. And so I wanna share my story, you know, as a little girl, my family actually lived in affordable housing apartment units, and this actually allowed my parents to use the additional income that would have gone to the rent to actually invest in my siblings and I. Like, they were able to buy clothes, school supplies, and house items from actually local minority-owned businesses that were close by that actually could use those dollars. And so I actually see this, um, this is the reality of what this project can do. But I do wanna say that, um, we don't end it here, right? And I hear the need to invest more, and so we should approve this project, but we need to stay the course and ensure that we continue to invest in these families in, in these neighborhoods, so that they have more access to resources and amenities. Um, and with that, um, I'd be happy to make a motion to actually move this item to support this project.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion in a second. Let's hear from Councilmember Harris.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Sean, with great deference and respect for you as council member in District Two, I decided to take a meeting with Danielle and John to talk about this project. If you listen to my comments at the last meeting, I certainly had concerns about the density, about the possible parking impacts on the Woodlake community, and, uh, you know, other aspects that I hope that we could massage with the state to come up with just the right tailored-fit project for this site. I, I think it is very fair sight to put housing. It's, um, but, but you know, you want to work with the community and get the right fit. Look, I, I have, uh, in my career as a council member, entitled a lot of very dense houses in the rail yards at Sixty-Fifth and Folsom in the River District. To the members of the Woodlake community who cry that you're being over-concentrated with low-income housing, I'd like to point out that most of the affordable housing in the city is being built in District Three. Uh, you know, we've got Mirasol Housing, we've got the AJ, now we have the Wong Center Family, the Wong, uh, Family Center, and we have, uh, the Anton Development in, in Latomas. These are not bad things for the neighborhood. Plus, you know, I've put together a lot of very dense student housing near Sac State. These things do not harm neighborhoods. The fact of the matter is, the housing is at a premium in Sacramento, and we're fortunate to have developers who want to invest in our neighborhoods. Still, uh, I had real concerns about the parking ratio in this project. As a builder, these are the things I think about. You know, is this project gonna work on this site? It's one thing to, to speak in platitudes about our need for housing, they're, they're all true. But you still have to think about the sensitivity of the neighborhoods and the actual efficacy of the building on the site on which it sits. People are afraid of density. I don't think they necessarily should be. And this is a TOD. This is exactly what we're looking at in terms of, you know, lowering vehicle miles traveled, but you can't ignore the parking ratios either. You know, you have to look at both, take a global view of the whole project. When I met with Danielle and John, uh, I expressed my concerns. Some of them were aesthetic about the look of the building. I think it's too monolithic. I think it could use a lot more detail around the glazing to make it much more appealing. And I was very concerned about the parking, which they were, got to work on. And I think that they've come up with a decent ratio and a decent solution, so that there will not be an added parking load in the Wood, Woodlake neighborhood. Here's my question to you, John, uh, or, or maybe Megan. You know, we've talked a little bit about Woodlake Park and the amenity that it is for all of D2, and yet it has no bathroom. You know, look, I'm, I'm a big believer in parks. I'm wondering if you can pull enough money out of this project to put a bathroom in Woodlake Park. Is that even a conceivable possibility? Because that would be an amenity that I think would be very valuable to the Woodlake community and, and all of North Sacramento. Because this is a very valuable park space. So that's question one. Question number two, somebody, uh, somebody is passing a rumor around that you're looking to cut down the big redwood trees. I don't think it's true. I know that you feel that the visual screening of the existing mature trees is very valuable to the project. I want to make sure that that is true and to swash that concern. Maybe you could just start by answering those two questions.
Sure. Um, well, thank you, Councilmember Harris. So, uh, to the first question about, um, bathrooms at Woodlake Park, we'd be very interested in talking to the Sacramento Parks Department about exploring that. Um, and you know, one of the benefits of developing affordable housing at a site immediately adjacent to publicly owned land is that we'll be mobilizing contractor, and we may be able to mobilize some additional funding from various grant streams we have to try to, you know, carve out some funding for public amenities like that. So I will have to follow up after this meeting when, when we have some of those conversations, but I think it's a fantastic idea. To your second question about, um, the trees, we have no intention of removing any trees. In fact, we've made a few creative design decisions with the shape of the building, so that all of the existing trees on the site can be preserved, and, and that's absolutely our intention. So the, I'm not sure the specific redwoods that you're referring to. I think maybe they're on the south side of the property, but, um, it's our intention to preserve one hundred percent of those.
Yeah, John, I appreciate that. Look, I have to tell you, I've worked with a lot of developers. I really enjoyed my conversation with John McCall and with Danielle. You know, th- this is how council members deal with these kind of projects, is to try to massage them so that we can get the best deal for the community. I, I have found that they are pliable and willing to, uh, do community engagement. I, you know, I'm not afraid of density, I'm not afraid of TOD. In fact, I'm a huge supporter of transit-oriented development. Uh, I'm also not afraid of low-income development. Look, people are people regardless of their income. Everybody needs a space to live. And, you know, it's, it's not a different class of people. These are just people who need a place to call home. And, um, I, I know that there's fear around that. I, I have a lot of pushback about student housing. You know, people told me, oh my God, there's gonna be parties, there's gonna be crime, there's gonna be everything. In fact, local schools were tearing their hair. You know what? There are solutions to all of these issues and, and all of these fears. I, I personally, were I the council member in this district, would try to lower the density just slightly, but I also get the economics of a, of a project. And I understand that the state is not exactly a hundred percent pliable about this. I also hear Councilmember Lowey's cry for a little bit more time to asslash the community's concerns. So John, I ask you, would it be a problem to delay this till after the, uh, after the council break?
So, you know, Councilmember Harris, that the, um, the deadline that we're working up against, that Danielle mentioned earlier, is a July twelfth deadline. I imagine that after the council break may push us past that deadline. It's a, a state funding sort of catch-all application program at which we need to establish what's the size of the site and what is the demonstrated site control for it by then?
Well, then let me ask you this. In your recent meetings with the community, what were the suggestions and what were you able to offer the community to, to assure them that you're listening and that you can bring the project, you know, into a condition that will help them?
Sure. You know, a few of them I mentioned earlier, things like performing a traffic study and committing to incorporate any suggested mitigations that come from that. Working with the city to address sort of increased and managed parking at our site on and off the site. EV car sharing onsite as well as transit passes, so that we can decrease the sort of reliance of our, of our, uh, members or our future residents on individual car ownership or extra car ownership. Um, and then sort of building design elements, um, both reflecting the neighborhood character and also kind of softening the impact. Those, those are the big ones we've been focusing on to date. We've received a handful more that we're sort of racing with our architects to try to incorporate, and you know, our, our intention is not to end those conversations today or even in the next few weeks, given that we're doing this, this, um, you know, proposed application on July twelfth. We're actually, I, I should say, one more is working with an arborist to try to make sure that we're preserving all of the sort of existing and quite mature trees surrounding the site, uh, during construction.
In our conversation, I pushed you pretty hard about electric car share and working with Envoy. Are you making a commitment to do that?
We are, you know, we're exploring sort of three different programs that we think would be good fits for this site right now. Um, and those conversations are ongoing, but we are absolutely committed to some form of shared vehicle access onsite that's gonna be available to the broader community, but available to the residents of this building as well, right next door.
And what about my feelings about, uh, more accentuated trim relief on the glazing?
I was really hoping we would have some, some, uh, updated renderings to share with you this afternoon. They are not quite there yet, but we are working on it with our architects.
Yeah, y- you know, so to, to the members of Woodlake community and, you know, the, the constituents of D2, I would say this. I have worked with developers who are intransigent, who just were thinking the bottom line, were not really amenable to listening to community concerns. I don't have that word. I don't have that worry about bridge, bridge housing. You know, as you can hear from what John's replies to my questions are, I, you know, they're not just saying, okay, we're going to build affordable housing and that's it. I think that these conversations will be ongoing. If, if councilmember, well, well, you know, I also, we were up against this last time where you had, John, you had to make an application for state funding. I take it you met that deadline because the vote went in your favor. So are you now telling me that there's another deadline on July 12th that you need to meet for further funding?
That's correct. This is the wonderful world of affordable housing finance. We get to keep applying again and again.
Which is something else that I understand, having worked with Anton up in Nutomas. You know, it's a tough game to get these projects through. It's not easy. I do think that the city will have more bites at this apple, more input into your project. Would you say that that's fair?
That's certainly our hope, including working with SHRA either as a funder or simply as a bond issuer and a guide in navigating the local processes.
Yeah. Well, Councilmember Lalois, again, with great deference to you as, you know, the proponent for your district, you know, I don't live in D2, but I have worked on a lot of pretty big dense housing developments. You know, I honestly, I feel like they've already made some pretty substantial concessions. If, if, you know, if we could get a bathroom in your park, that's a pretty good deal. And I, and since I think that their parking ratios are being brought into a condition, into a condition that will not cause harm for Woodlake, that's very meaningful to me. And then if, you know, you could get a little bit more visual beauty out of the project with more trim relief, you know, I'm getting to the point where I'm starting to like this project. So, you know, that's, that's where I am here, and I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. We've got Vice Mayor Ashby. We'll go to Mayor Portengueira and then allow Councilmember Lalois to, I may have a comment, but I want Councilmember Lalois to have the last comment here as the district council member. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So, you know, this project is really an interesting one because, you know, there's such strong feelings around affordable housing before, and, and then people are always concerned when it comes into the community and have lots of questions. And so I think, you know, for me, at the last hearing, I really felt like the community had been left behind, like not enough conversations had happened. Today, the information that you're sharing sounds much more like what I'm accustomed to hearing from a developer who's been at least meeting with the community. Some, some give and take, that you've responded to some things, that there's additional parking. I know there are some people on here that don't want additional parking, but in North Sacramento, you kind of need a car. So, I'm glad that you have worked that out with them. I wish that would have happened earlier. I wish those conversations would have happened earlier. I think it would have made a world of difference around the public sentiment of this project. Nonetheless, it's good that it's happened. The tree preservation's really important, not just for aesthetics, but it's one of the things that gives District Two its charm. Like other parts of this city, has these big beautiful trees, and we need to do everything we can to preserve them. I would say that I agree with Councilmember Harris. My initial reaction to the building is, eh, it's not very welcoming and friendly. It doesn't look like housing, it looks institutional. And so it would be good if you could do some design concepts. The city staff, the city team is very good at helping with that. So that would be one ask I would have. If you can help with the park, I think I specifically said this last time, we're used to asking developers to meet with the community to help with other needs when projects come in. It doesn't have to be the bathroom, but you should let the community lead on that. If that's what they want, then, and that's something you can help them achieve, that'd be great. If there's some other amenity in that park or some sidewalks or some safety issues or whatever that would make the community feel better about your project, that would make your project further enhance the community, I think that's great when you can do that. So I appreciate that your mind appears to be open to that, John, and that the state's on this call and Megan's nodding her head when we're talking about trying to be responsive to the community. And I know Danielle, and it will be the same, and it gives me also some level of confidence that you intend to bond through SHRA, because I know what that means. Once LaShel Dozier's involved, you will have to respond to that community, and she won't, she won't let you have any other way around that. And for the life of those bonds, you will be indebted to that community and you'll be answering to them. And that gives me some, actually, sense of hope as well, because she will hold you accountable, SHRA will. I have seen them, them do that well. I, I, I think the ingress and egress are still somewhat concerning. And I, I think, John, you'll figure this out as you go, but do be open to them, because those roads are tiny and you are sandwiched between the light rail and this very residential road, and there will be kids running across, and it is a very, it's a community that's been sort of blocked in, whether intentionally or unintentionally, by light rail and the freeway and, you know, on every side. And so when you talk about adding more traffic into a blocked-in area, there certainly will be implications. Whether they manifest on a traffic analysis or not is another story, but you'll see them. It'll be really clear to you as you're developing out. So just be open to it with the community that you may need some things that don't exist there now, crosswalks for your own residents to get to the park safely or whatever it is for the schools. I think two things can be true at the same time. You know, we can owe District Two, because we definitely do, and we can also move forward with affordable housing. I think this conversation, and this is no one on this call's fault, least of all Danielle, Megan, and John, but I think all of this would be easier if we had the library under construction right now, the library that we've promised, that we went out and got $7 million for. Pat Sayer Hadley, who called in, is the nicest person in the entire universe. She's the president of the Friends of the Library up there. Her concern is, we haven't built the new library, we're getting rid of an old, where we haven't moved the ball forward on other things that we've promised them. And that's part of what you're hearing here, is a frustration from people in District Two who are like, you can move the housing fast and you can have a deadline every week for the housing, but why didn't you have a deadline for our library or for another park for us? And so I feel for them in that regard. It's nobody, again, nobody on this call's fault, but I just, I say it to my colleagues, because we need to take a mental note. Got to push that library forward for them in equal time. I'm going to be very sad if the bridge housing comes up before the library opens for that community. We ought to be able to do that. We ought to be able to match pace. And then, I guess, just one last thing from, two last things from me. One is, the vote before us last time was whether or not to support John getting additional funding for the project, and since I didn't feel that he had supported the community, hard for me to support him. That is not the vote in front of us now. The vote in front of us now, in my opinion, is actually kind of easy, because the vote in front of us now is, do they get the one acre, or do we give them the extra acre? And everyone agrees that it's a big project. If anything, we're asking you to reduce the size. I don't think giving you less land helps. We need to give you the land, because the community in Woodlake's concerns are around you not having enough space and not having enough parking and having an over-density. If we were to somehow punitively keep this piece of land from you, it would make the project, it would exacerbate the problems that they're already concerned with. So I don't think that would be a good move. I think the right thing to do is to give you the biggest piece of land possible, ask you to reduce the density as much as you can, improve the traffic safety, improve the, you know, walkability, the trees, the park, fix the outside of the building to be aesthetically a bit nicer, and then you've already done some things around the parking. So to me, giving you the additional land is not controversial. And then lastly, just one piece I want to add to this, that is uniquely about me. There are many people on this council and that I have served with on this council over the years that are not here anymore that lived in low-income housing as young people, as Councilmember Vang did, and, and know what that meant to their parents. I lived in low-income inclusionary housing as the mama. It's a different feeling. I was on, you know, food stamps to feed my little boy, and I used subsidized childcare, Child Action, to pay for him to go to little preschools and things so that I could go to work to make enough money to pay that reduced rent amount and a car note and our health insurance and whatever other needs we had, and buy his little tennis shoes and pencil boxes and fill his lunchbox every day. It's really important how much energy and effort we put into that building, because the people who live in it will be defined by it. I know, because I've lived in it, and I know how it feels to live in something that feels hurtful versus something that makes you feel proud. I think there are really good components about this location. Actually, its proximity to the park is one of them. Of course, the proximity to the light rail is good too, if it's helpful for people if it goes, light rail takes more than they need to go. But if we overcrowd it, if we don't design it to be nice on the outside and make people feel proud to live there, we will, we will further the labeling of the people who live in there, the moms, dads, who are just trying their very, very best to put themselves in a better position for their kids. So I would ask you just to never, you know, lose focus on that. I don't have any problem giving you the additional land today. I appreciate that you're talking to the community. The most important thing that you said today is that you're going to spend the next year in conversation with the community and the council member. I hope that you will keep your word on that and that you will listen to LaShel Dozier when she's engaged. And I wish you all the best. I hope that the project is a smashing success, and I thank the state for, you know, continuing to try to help Sacramento lead. I do feel for Councilmember Lalois, because if these conversations had all happened two months ago, I don't think he would have had to deal with the calls and the frustration of the community over the last month. And I think this project will be better even two months from now. It's very hard to take a vote before those conversations happen. So the more you can do on the front and the more you will help the project be successful and loved by the community, deal with some of their concerns and questions. But reducing the amount of land would not help us at this point. So, easy vote tonight to increase the amount of land.
Thank you, Mayor Portengueira.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate all the staff's work on this here. A couple of questions here for John, and on the issue of the car share. You know, I, you know, my concern sometimes is that it's not, not significant for the size, for it to be successful and to actually be impactful when it comes to the amount of vehicle travel or vehicles in and out on the, in the area. What, what has been your thinking on that aspect? It was a major conversation at the last hearing, and, and, you know, I voted for the project, obviously for the timeline, for the need of the, the housing. Obviously, the location's critical, but, but I'm really concerned about, you know, that this is not just, you know, performative and actually be substantive. So what's, what are you, what's your thoughts on that and who have you spoken with?
So, yeah, you know, I'll be honest with you. We are sort of in conversation with a couple of different groups, first at the city of Sacramento, and we're new to the car sharing on our properties approach to responding to sort of parking and car needs for our residents. So our intention is, as we get into those conversations, and we have a couple of them scheduled for next week, actually, to sort of let the experts who do this, you know, kind of understanding the market analysis, understanding the location, the target population, lead us towards a good ratio, a good number of shared stalls for the number of people in this building and perhaps for the surrounding community, if they think that's a sort of need as well. So I wish those conversations were a little further along. Truthfully, we had a couple of calls canceled in the past week for COVID reasons, but we are, you know, we're not going to be sort of dogmatic or strict in our approach to that. We want to know what the best solution is, is, is our intention.
Okay, well, I mean, here's, I mean, for, for me, it's going to be important that you commit to, and I'll help facilitate this, also meeting with the, the Air District here in the Sacramento Air Quality Management District. In the north area, we've created a mobility hub. We're looking at one in the south area. We worked with many of our nonprofit housers, mutual housing to do, and learned a lot from the car share program. But this is one where I think it's important that, 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 that it's significant, because there, while it is on, on the light rail side, encouraging your, your, your future tenants to not own a vehicle or to reduce their costs of insurance and gas and maintenance, you know, those are all added benefits where you increase the amount of disposable income for the local businesses. I mean, that, and for their kids, for the uses, for whatever it is. And that two largest impacts for folks, obviously, is housing and transportation. So I think that, to me, is, is going to be critical, and I'd like to help facilitate that, but want to commitment that there's going to be a, a significant placement. There's a number of, obviously, envoys, one of them, Ytricity, I think, is another one where you don't have to use the, the, it's a, over the parking stalls, not, 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 not plug-in type of options as well. So, so that's, that's one question. So, and, and what, and I'd like to know kind of the timing of when you, because what I'd like to make sure is that there's answers to the community about, about that aspect for the tenants and those. But what is your, what would be your timing on addressing kind of that issue? Like, if we had this amount of car share, we can impact this amount of vehicles in the community?
Well, first, thank you for your commitment to support connections to Air District and other programs in the city. We'd love to learn from those and implement whatever best practices you're seeing for mutual housing or others. So I don't think we have a firm sort of deadline because of our design process at the moment to, to identify and sort of finalize a number of EV charging stalls, but we'd be happy to work with the city council and staff to respond to whatever the sort of, you know, timeline commitments you would need to feel comfortable that we're, we're taking into account that feedback from council and community members.
It sounds to me like the council members asking for some responses to that, that issue. So I think, you know, the, I mean, obviously, you're happy to work with the city, because you need our authority to move forward. So, but I, again, I guess I'd like to make sure you, you, you know, at, at least make some, some say, hey, we want, before the project is, is in this design phase, I'd like to know kind of where that's at, because that's going to be important, depending on which, which service provider you use, right? Which, which methodology you use, so on that aspect. And, and so I guess, for my end, at least before, within the next couple of weeks, a few weeks, I'd like to make sure that we schedule an opportunity to meet with the Air District and take advantage of some of the, of, of the funding that we have been drawing down regionally for that as well. You know, I, again, I think on the, on the childcare side, what, what's the thought process on, on both the need for the tenants and then for the area? What type of childcare model? Are you looking for a market rate model? Is this a subsidized model? Are you looking for Head Start? Have you had conversations with Head Start on that aspect?
Yeah, so we are working with a group called Child Action Incorporated. They're a sort of childcare advocacy group throughout Sacramento. I'm sure you're familiar with them. And we're sort of hoping, you know, they've been incredibly helpful for us, first in thinking about conceptualizing the space that we would, at this early stage of design, want to include in the building based on the need in the surrounding community. And then as we get further along in those designs in terms of, you know, target population and identifying a tenant, though, there, we're hoping going to be the ones to introduce us to the right tenant for this space. Our intention is that it's a community-serving, not a nonprofit childcare provider, meaning they're going to have some component of subsidized childcare, whether it's Head Start or another similar program with state funding. But, you know, we often find that unfortunately, those, those conversations happen a little bit after the design process, because most providers want to get involved once they actually know when a building would open.
Okay.
Hey, here's where I would, I would, again, your commitment. Here's where I'd like to have a commitment from you, to meet with the director of Head Start here in Sacramento. Head Start does fund and lease space. But one thing that, and they do pay for the staff and whatnot, but what they don't have is capital construction. So waiting till the end is a problem, because at the, the important part for a lot of these is to get that in the design aspect now. Because if you don't do that early on, then you're going to affect your ability to, what, what, what level of service you can provide in that area. So I think, I think that's got to be early on. And again, my office can help coordinate that meeting to make sure that we start looking at both. Uh, and again, my office can help coordinate that meeting to make sure that we start looking at both subsidized childcare and also market rate childcare for. Whether it's nonprofit or not, but the biggest need uh, right now is for middle-class families who don't have, when, don't have access to the subsidized childcare. So there is a need everywhere, but there's, there is, uh, I think there's an, an opportunity to do. Uh, a hybrid model for the needs of the neighborhood and the needs of the, of the tenants as well. So. Um, so can I get a commitment from you that will, the, you know, as before this final design is done, that we have a. Conversation with uh, Head Start and some of the, the folks who are uh, who could provide this kind of service?
Absolutely. We, we are committed. We'd like to do that as, as early as possible and thank you for helping us facilitate those connections.
And then finally, the, is, is the space, uh, I mean, this, this, uh, I mean. We're, we're up here, what, another week before deadline? Are we going to have another meeting before a deadline? Is that? Is that, is that going to be a, a standard practice here? I mean, I. I know it's not your intention. I just want to make sure that we're planning a little further uh, ahead of that.
I, I can commit to you. We, we will not be coming before you at the last council meeting before a deadline again.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's uh, that concludes my comments.
Okay, I'm going to give Councilmember Loloey the last word and then we're going to vote.
Thank you very much. Um, again, John, um, thank you so much. Um, everything that Councilmember uh, Harris. Uh, alluded to, I have to agree as far as being, being a developer that. Has been engaging the community and listening and making those adjustments. So I think. Um, what's fairness to be identified. Um, the, just, I have two questions. One is on the, the community center. Would the youth um, within the, the, the community, not just the building? Would the youth be able to use the community center or is the community center only available to the residents of it?
So I, I think you're referring to the, the first floor community room I mentioned. Is that right? Yeah, um, so you know, typically it's sort of a flexible space within our properties that. Can serve a number of needs after school, help um, community meetings, movie screenings, birthday parties, you know, et cetera. Um, the exact programming of that is still, of course, early, early stages right now, but we'd be. Excited to talk to your office as soon as you'd like to sort of think about ways in which we can leverage that community resource for, for. You know, a number of different benefits.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Um, so just to wrap this up, I think the bathroom situation, we're going to look into it to see. If there's a possibility, um, if I, if I'm correct on that. Um, the parking, I think at one point you indicated that there might be a parking permit situation that if. That, that's going to help the traffic. That's something that uh, you will look into it. And stop me anywhere that I'm, I'm talking out of the um, the, the content.
That's right, yeah. And I, I'd be happy to talk with you as well as with the city's parking division about where those conversations are.
Great, I appreciate it. And then also, would this project look into hiring? District two subcontractors or what have you for job opportunities within the residence of district two?
We certainly would within the sort of boundaries of what's allowable, but we'd be very interested in that, yes.
So um, with, with that said, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a substitute motion with the conditions. Based on the, some of the commitments that I made today. Um, so we, we have that somewhat in writing so we can use as reference and uh, move this project forward.
So may, may I just suggest, and, and any motion is appropriate, but maybe you could ask. The maker of the motion for a friendly amendment, just that all of the commit, specific commitments that were made. Uh, by Mr. McCall here today are incorporated into the motion. I think they'd be, I assume the makers of the motion would be open to.
My apologies, uh, Councilmember uh, Vang, do you mind with the, with the, the subsidy motion that I just proposed?
Yeah, we can make that amendment. You're, just for clarity. It's regarding, I want to make sure that we just have that on record. It's just.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Parking permits, local hiring and um, you know, the community room, um, being able to have. Um, the youth within the uh, the, the community to see if they can utilize it.
Mr. McCall or Ms. Kirkabear?
Hold on, Mayor. Sean, did you want to add your tree preservation and your um, aesthetics of the building as well?
Yes, I, I'm sorry. Um, yes, and the car sharing aspect.
Can I make a quick clarifying question? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Oh, so we're talking about them exploring this, right? Like not a commitment that it's always necessarily going to happen. So I just want to remind ourselves, this is a nonprofit developer building affordable housing, so it's not like a for-profit developer where. They're making profits and they're using some of that profit to do a little extra. So as long as it's exploring. Those questions, which I think was the discussion we just had, that they look into it and try, they're committing to try to figure it out, but it's not a commitment that they're going to do it.
As also a council member, we're talking about community benefits.
Yeah, I know. And so I'm saying, I'm talking about Sean.
It talks about community benefits.
Yes, I understand. I understand.
Let me, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but they, you know, they, they haven't priced the bathroom, for example. There's no design for this. So I think. That it is, i- i- the intent is in good faith, and by the way, look at how far they've come. Bridge Housing, working with the community as Vice Mayor and others have acknowledged, even you, Councilmember Loloey, since the last meeting. So it, it is in good faith. To work with the community. Uh, and you as the council member on each of these community benefits. That's the intent of the, of the, right, council member?
Yes, I mean, a- after all, if they can't, then us as city representative. We need to step up to be able to bring those benefits to that community. Otherwise. Um, going back to the residents of this complex, these kids that go to the park and play, there are no bathrooms in there. So.
Well, that's right, that's why we have a city budget, you know, mid-year coming up and the five million that you have and hopefully more to come, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity, but I think I heard Councilmember Vang. Accept the friendly amendment seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. We've clarified exactly what it means. I think let's wrap this up and let's vote.
Vote.
Ready, Councilmember Loloey?
Uh, yes, sure.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby. Yes, Councilmember Loloey.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, that's unanimous and that's great. Um, thank everybody, the council member, the community, the developer, the state of California. Uh, Bridge Housing, by the way, Bridge Housing has a tremendous national reputation. Um, uh, when, when affordable housing was not even, you know. They're a pioneer. They are a pioneer in the affordable housing arena. Worked with them for a long time, so thank you. All right, everybody, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Um, that inclu- uh, uh, is there public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mary, do you have a right hands raised for matters not on the agenda? Would you like to take that first?
How many?
Currently have ten.
Okay, let's go. Thank you.
Uh, first is a phone number, four three six six, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute. Next speaker is Tara Curse.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Tara Curse and I'm a member of the District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders. Um, requesting an independent investigator to conduct a fair, comprehensive and thoughtful inquiry. Into Councilman Loloey's residency during his term as a city council member. I want to stress independent investigation on that statement. Um, our district's needs are quite significant and we're concerned that rumors and distractions will not serve any of us well. With representation in question. We're seeking truth in a timely manner so that all sides are protected. Councilmember Loloey, District Two residents, and all who live and work in the city of Sacramento. Please, as, as far as you're able, please do this expeditiously. Thank you for an opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Lambert Davis.
Yes, um, I see my time says one sixteen. That must have been the last caller. Anyway, there's a major problem, um, mayor and uh, city councilman Loloey and the rest of the dis. Uh, the rest of the city council and the city manager. There's a tremendous problem. In Del Paso Heights that I, I have identified. About three weeks ago, some relatives of mine were in town and we were riding around looking at the neighborhood that we grew up in. And they saw a lot of cars over at Grant Pool. And, and we had grandchildren with us and uh, nieces and nephews and. So we stopped in there and I said, well, let me go in and see what's going on in this pool. And you're going to be shocked and I hope the uh, Low Riders Association is listening to this and they'll contact me. So we can unite on this thing. When I walked into the Grant Pool, it was all white males in the pool. And there was a sign there that said Real Linda Aquatics. And I said to myself, what in the world is somebody from Real Linda doing swimming in Grant Pool but the. But the residents of Del Paso Heights and this is the eighth day of a hundred degrees. Why can't they get in that pool? So what I did is I walked all the way up in there. To see what is this? And so I, I have determined, they told me that it was a fundraiser for cancer. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to get the attention of the people I need to pay attention to this. And I'm going to go up there again and if I see that same scenario, I'm going to jump in the pool with my street clothes. And I hope that I'm arrested so that it'll bring attention to where do these young people go in this hundred-degree weather? When we were teenagers, that was the spot. So I think everybody needs to pay attention to this.
Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, open up the Grant Pool to the Del Paso.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elaine.
Yes, hi. Um, I would just like to say to the council, um, that um, I am disappointed. That District Two has been left behind. They've been left behind for a long time. Um, the park space is diminishing. This is the fourth property, as I may have said earlier, that's been taken. We, I see all the other districts get quite a bit, quite a bit. When you're putting, I don't think you guys realize, you're saying, you know, oh, everywhere is getting uh, affordable housing. But the affordable housing is not going in the pocket. I've not heard anything in Hollywood Park. I don't think Curtis Park is getting one and they've had a big development. That should have been required. I, I don't see it in uh, East Sacramento. And you know, we're getting three within point eight miles. So for everybody on this uh, council to say, oh, we're all getting, you're not getting it. Like they are here. That, that's really important to note. I don't think that they should be putting all the affordable housing and segregating people in District Two, because that's actually what you're starting to do. It's that mu- that close and it's nine, five, eight, one, five district. When you look at the population. They are segregating them because downtown has a much higher population than we do and it's much more spread out. You're not putting them all in close proximity. I hope the council starts looking about the investment in District Two. Because you need a lot of it. As Councilman Loloey said, it, he only, there's only twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, annual income. That is horrific and you all know that. And I also want to say that I support Councilman Loloey. I think it's horrendous what people have done to be. And I think that, I don't know who from the city is, is talking to them, but the thing is, count, uh, the old councilman. Uh, Alan Warren was also uh, known to have lived out of the district by the whole wide district. I've heard this from and nothing was done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is.
Mayor, could I just say something really quickly? Just on the, on the Crocker Village Curtis Park, there are ninety units of. Affordable housing that went in that development. That was the first thing that went in there.
Thank you. Next.
Next speaker is Kristen Perry.
Hi, uh, yeah, I've listened to the whole meeting this night and there's been a lot of good conversation and chat. But um, at this point, after spending six years in Sacramento from Los Angeles, I'm kind of signing out at this point. Um, I feel like our voices here in District Two are not being listened to. And I'm super disappointed and I cannot, I can't do this anymore. So. Um, I don't think I'm going to be part of these meetings anymore just because. I feel like the commentary on especially Arden Way was not listened to. And you guys all just didn't understand what happened here with Bridge Housing. And I hope Bridge Housing does a great thing. Um, but what I'm seeing so far is they won't. And I'm really disappointed, but I can't do this anymore. So um. You know, after all this and six years, talking to you guys, I'm kind of done. And I really hope you reach out to the community a bit more and listen a bit more. Um, because personally, my experience is, has been really disappointing. And I, I, you know, love the comments from Valenzuela and Vang and. Everyone else, but you guys just don't get it. So I'm done. Thanks.
Sorry.
Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Shanae Buffington.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. I live in District Five. Um, I live west of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, I've been living in my grandparents' house for four years now. And my neighbor has an upward of twenty cats. Um, I've called three one one multiple times to um, have the city come out to. Try to correct an issue, correct the issue. To correct this issue. So um, I'm cleaning up uh, feces in my front and backyard. Um, two to three times a day, the cats are defecating on um, in my driveway, on the sidewalk. Um, and I call three one one, I tell three one one what the issue is. Hey, she has an upward of twenty cats. Um, it's affecting the quality of life, uh, not only for me, but for my neighbors as well, because they're constantly cleaning up. Um, cat feces and um, dealing with crying cats and fighting cats and. Nothing is being done. I'm being told by um, three one one customer service agents to set up traps. And tried to, to trap the cats and the kittens and that there was nothing that they can do. Um, cats are free roaming and it's just like, I'm having to live with this persistent issue. Uh, the cats are steadily mating with each other and having kittens. And I've seen at least four cats with clouded eyes. One cat, one kitten was in the gutter, ne- the neighbor across the street. Was able to um, take, take the cat to the SP uh, VA, I believe that's the synonym for it. Um, so that the cat can get some care. So I need something to be done. I'm in uh, Councilmember Shanir's district. I know I'm not in Curtis Park, I'm in Oak Park, but I need this issue to be corrected. Like ASAP. And I need to know how I can get help to do this. Thank you.
And I, if I could ask, I think you've emailed our office and we have somebody working on this.
Uh, I, I believe so, um, Councilmember Shanir, but I, I, I haven't sent an email in, in quite some time. So probably was, I, I don't know, but I.
It might have been someone else with the same problem, but if you, if uh, we can get your contact information, we'll contact Animal Services.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir.
Next speaker is Barry Boyd.
I'll contact your office tomorrow. Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you there, Mindy. Um, my apologies to the council. I heard the mayor state. Do we have public comment? And muscle memory kicked in and I clicked on raise hand. So with that, let me get off of the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Albanita Araba.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor as well as councilmembers. Uh, I am a resident of Old North Sacramento and is a member of the District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders. We are requesting an independent investigator to conduct a fair, comprehensive and thoughtful inquiry into council member. Loloey's residence during his term as a city council member. Our district's needs are significant and so we are concerned that rumors and distractions will not serve any of us well. Our district's needs are significant and so we are concerned that rumors and distractions will not serve any of us well. We ask that um, with uh, in regards to the representation in question. We are seeking truth in a timely manner so that all sides are protected, including Councilmember La Loaui, the District Two residents and all who live and work in the city of Sacramento. And we were, are requesting that this be done expeditiously. Thank you so much for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Melissa Harris.
Thank you, uh, my name is Melissa Harris, I am also um, a member of the District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders. I live in Hagenwood. Um, and I wanna acknowledge that the rumors and reports that Councilman La Loaui um, does not live in this county, much less our district, um, has been hugely divisive for our community. Um, and reiterating the same call, we absolutely need an independent investigation, so we can have facts to put this matter um, to rest, we want the councilmen to have a um, a fair and non-political investigation so that the truth can come to light and we can move on. Um, we have a lot of work that needs done and really appreciate the comments and discussion about development during today's meeting. Um, I can say that I am really excited about some of the opportunities in this district. And so, you know, whatever the outcome of this investigation, um, we would really just like to see um, us move, be able to move forward as one community. Um, I have a little bit of time left, so I'm gonna open one more comment, which is, if you are serious about bringing development, there's quite a few city parcels that are vacant uh, near the um, Arden Arcade uh, near Academy Way, Light Rail Station that are also close to a Light Rail Station. Um, and I'd like to see the city um, take some action on those, especially a parcel on Kathleen Way. That was uh, acquired specifically for that purpose, so um, there's a lot of opportunities and lots of places we'd like to see more development um, within our district, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Zach Traubridge.
Yeah, hi, um, I just wanted to say that uh, recent articles from various local news outlets have alleged that Councilmember Sean La Loaui is not a resident of the s- uh, of District Two. Um, so as a member of the group of the uh, District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders, we urge uh, Daryl Steinberg and City Council uh, to conduct a fair, comprehensive and thoughtful inquiry into Councilmember La Loaui's residency during his term as a city council member. Uh, the District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders includes influential and involved residents from many neighborhoods in Sacramento City's Council District Two. Uh, although the allegations, allegations against Councilmember La Loaui are still legally unproven, the article raises serious concerns that deserve investigation. State law requires local elected officials to reside and be registered to vote in the districts they represent. Statute uh, defines legal residence as physical presence combined with an intent to remain. And it's just unclear uh, that Councilmember La Loaui satisfied these requirements when he filed his candidacy and during his uh, term in office. So we believe that the city should retain the services of an outside investigator who can validate or refute Councilmember La Loaui's claims of residency with hard factual evidence. And we request that this be done uh, with all prudent haste. Shining light on this issue serves the best interests of Councilmember La Loaui, the residents of District Two and all the voters and residents of the city of Sacramento. As we all know, one city council member affects the entire city, so we just wanna make sure that we uh, can resolve this as fast as possible. And regardless of the outcome, uh, move on, as Melissa said, to, you know, tackle some of the big issues that are facing our district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, our next speaker is P.
I'm just wanting to get back on to ask the council members to take a firm stance um, for the residents of District Two um, in general and to denounce the name-calling, the negative media campaigns against North Sacramento and the bullying um, that uh, has a lot of residents not willing to speak up or engage in various capacities. Um, with all due respect, Mayor and City uh, uh, City Manager Howard Chan, you both know um, quite well what it is like to have um, people come to your home um, and to bully you. And your, your residents of this great city has continuously experienced that on um, various uh, items such as cannabis, um, requests for their diverse housing options, um, moving up housing and other issues from this district. And I have yet to hear um, the council members address that. That should be unacceptable for anyone, including uh, council members and coun- specifically Councilmember La Loaui. Um, and also remember that we have a lot of neighborhood associations and groups and things like that, but they merely represent those that are engaged, involved with that group. They do not speak for the entire district and community uh, people that lead in various capacities.
Thank you for your comments, our next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hello, my name is Robert Copeland, I'm looking at the article by Teresa Cliff. Sacramento County homeless population nearly doubled in three and now higher than San Francisco. On any given night, there is nine thousand two hundred seventy homeless people in Sacramento County, up from fifty-five seventy in January twenty nineteen. Up to twenty thousand people were experienced homeless over the course of the year. So I'm asking, what is the Sacramento City Council gonna do about this? Um, you got rid of the inclusionary housing, you didn't support rent control, which would both help the homeless population, we need more housing. People are getting priced down of apartments and housing right now. I think uh, what Sacramento City Council has been doing for years has been a disaster for the people in Sacramento, with maybe one or two uh, good city council members over that course of time. Including mine, I, I like Katie Valenzuela, but the most of you can go retire, not be voted in the office again, step down, and as far as Sean La Loaui, I'm agreeing with the people on the City Council District Two. They need a, a representative that actually lives in a district and if proven he's not in that district, should be uh, out of office, get somebody that actually lives in a district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, our next speaker is Stuart Gao.
Well, again, uh, thanks for letting me speak a second time, uh. I'd like to thank councilmembers Harris, Ashby and Guerra um, for supporting our community and our council member and making really sensible suggestions uh, to mitigate the issues that, that are obvious with this project. Uh, we, we wanna make it functional, we wanna make it better. Not only for the current community, but for the new residents living in that community. And it, it's awful when we have these clashes, because you know, we want the new community, the new members to be, to be welcome, we don't want them to feel like we objected to them. There's really, there's real problems to be solved here and uh, uh, engaging the community sooner with projects like this would go a long way to build, be, building a better city. Um, the, our community, that's all we've been asking for, is mitigate the problems with this project, so we, we really need your eyes on this, we need your support to make it good for, for everyone. I don't know any, any Wood Lakers who say they want the project stopped, people are just really concerned. And um, we've been called names by activists, by the media for our engagement and our country's become so polarized, uh, I really, I, I think policies and attitudes that seek to diminish and silence the voice of the people, that's under democratic and it's, it's not progressive. Um, I was really disappointed uh, by Council Valenzuela, Valenzuela's lack of engagement with this project and its conversation and engaging in District Two. Uh, we wanna make this a better project for everyone and I hope she'll support us uh, and, and, and look at the problems and uh, you know, I think it's too dense, but I agree with uh, Councilmember Ashby, you know, giving this land, maybe that you know-
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment please?
Uh, well, thank you for hearing me and uh, let's make this a good project.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Kathy Anuszek.
Thank you, I'm Kathy Anuszek, I live in Hagenwood. And as a member of the District Two Coalition of Neighborhood Leaders, I'm calling tonight to request an independent investigation of our council members residency, to either refute or confirm the validity of Councilman La Loaui's serving as our representative in District Two. Our district has a long history of struggle and lack of investment, our needs are so great. So the rumors and distraction are only further harming our district until we have transparency and truth. Please move quickly to get clear, fair answers for how we will be moving forward to serve our district residents, businesses and organizations. And I wanted to also just say thank you to um, Ms. Ashby. Um, when she said we, uh, the council and the city owes D Two, um, we, we really feel that and we appreciate those comments that are looking towards bringing our district up, bringing the needed resources and the needed investment, the needed development um, for all of our district, we have many neighborhoods here and um, they all have their distinct character. And we need clear and good representation as well as the support of the full city to bring the development, to bring the um, economic relief that our residents and our businesses need so much. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments, our final speaker is a phone number, last four digits, six two seven eight.
Can you access me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening everyone, um, my name is Kelly Cooper, I'm the resident of um, the Del Paso Heights community. And I wanted to first say thank you to um, My Vane um, and to Andrew, Ashby, my favorite. Um, just to basically talk about this development. Um, if anyone knows the history, it's our family, um, our family came here in the fifties. And with leadership change, new beginnings always happen. And I'm grateful for um, the new housing project, and if you know our district or you live in our district, you would know that we've had several projects, the North Avenue Complex, Taylor Street Apartments. We have low income here anyway. And as Andrew has already stressed before, if you're a struggling family, My Vane, you guys, you don't understand, we weren't born with a gold spoon in our mouth. So I appreciate that you're giving children and families an opportunity to house their children. Um, I'm grateful um, for Bridge Housing and Wood Lake is just making us think about it because they haven't had the disproportionate like we have. So I really like to thank you guys all and continue to um, continue to do a great job for our district and continue to make changes for the city. And thank you, Daryl Steinberg, for um, the leadership and verifying the leadership of our district to make sure everyone is held accountable accordingly, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you very much, members of the pub, we do have some council members that wanna speak tonight, I have one final uh, comment and announcement. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
I wanted to follow up on an item that was not added to the log after the budget discussion on June fourteenth. There was a series of data points that I was asking for from the police department, that was said it would go to the log, it's not on the log. So I'm putting it on the log here tonight for us to vote on in July. And then after a conversation with the chief, I'm actually gonna add an additional data point to that list on vacancy rates for budgeted positions and where that money goes. So um, I sent that information to Mindy as well, but um, all the items from the June fourteenth, that said they'd go to the log and then the vacancy rate data for um, PD, I G, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um. Hey, I just wanna say that we had two Pops in the Parks concerts that were enormously successful and you know, the people just were so happy to get out and relate to each other again. It was, it was really sweet. And Rick Estrin and the Nightcats played at the last concert at East Portal Park. I've known Rick for thirty-five years. He is an icon and an internationally renowned harmonica player. We had a blues concert that was just off the charts. And Rick, I'm sorry you weren't there, because man, I'm telling you, you would have loved it. Anyway, um, so that was great, but, but what I do want to announce is that we have a oh, here we go. There we go, we have a, sorry, we have a screen on the green, an outdoor movie coming up Saturday, July twenty-third at Nino's Park. Will be playing Sonic the Hedgehog Two, it's a family friend, friendly film. And uh, you can visit my website for more information, additionally, we have another vaccine clinic at Stanford Settlement Neighborhood Center. Uh, this will be on Thursday, June thirtieth, from ten till four PM. And uh, we certainly hope that everybody gets vaccinated. Look, Mike, myself, my staff, we've all been infected with COVID. We got through it, my daughter got through it. Everybody's dealing with this, this virus, it's not going away. Please, everybody avail yourself of medical science and the tools that are available to us to stem the spread of this pandemic. We really need to go there to keep our society open. And uh, I hope you all go to Stanford Settlement and get vaccinated if you haven't been already. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you are on mute.
I'm on mute, yeah, I just couldn't get off, uh, Councilmember Vane, go, go.
Thanks, Mayor, just wanted uh, to share some quick announcement, uh, we have a concert in the park at Valley High. Um, Councilmember Jennings, you are welcome to jo- join us, I know that uh, congratulations on elections and you now have the new District Seven, but uh, I will be hosting a concert, um, concert in the park at Valley High on Saturday, July thirtieth, from five to eight thirty. And really hoping that uh, folks would join us, uh, the band that will be performing is Capital City Band, they're really amazing. And so I'll hope that all of y'all will come out for that. Um, also just wanted to announce that we, uh, there is a soccer, summer soccer skills and drills series open to all youth at all skills level at McRoe Valley High Community Center every Wednesday from eleven thirty to one PM. Um, if you wanna get more information about it, you can go to www dot O K U G um, O F foundation dot org, free lunches also provided. And then also wanna give a shout out to Solid Ground Sports Academy, Coach Gilmore. Uh, they are now registering youth ages five to seventeen for their rock solid flag football season for girls. Um, that begins September tenth, uh, there's a girls' division, co-ed division as well. If you are interested in that, um, email solidgroundsports at gmail dot com or you can call nine one six eight eight nine three five four eight. Um, and then lastly, just a friendly reminder, I do Monday walks with seniors at the Pennell Community Center every Monday. Um, but the seniors walk does not just happen at the Pennell Center, they also happen at George Sim Community Center, Oak Park Community Center and also South and Thomas Community Center through uh, YPSI. Uh, but I am there every Monday at the Sam and Bonnie Pennell Community Center at nine o'clock with their seniors. Um, and so really encouraging folks to join us, if not at Pennell, you can check out the other community centers as well. And those are my updates, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Jennings.
And thank you, Mayor, uh, we are six days away from the Fourth of July Independence Day Parade happening in District Seven. It's gonna start at ten o'clock and it's gonna follow that tried and true route of the YPS Academy, which is the Old Lisbon School. And it's gonna go from Southland Park up Windbridge and finally make the turn onto Pocket Road in the entrance into Garcha Bend Park. Um, the grandstand and the MC will be announcing at the Promenade Shopping Center of everyone that's in the parade. Who's gonna be in the parade? Uh, we're gonna have old school classic cars, Low Rider classic cars, float, fire trucks, the John F. Kennedy marching band and our grand marshals, we want you to come out and meet our grand marshals. These are all the people who are frontline workers who helped get us through the pandemic. And I wanna thank two volunteers for helping us do a great job of organizing it, and that's Beth Costner and Jim Gary. So come on out on the Fourth of July at ten o'clock and see a wonderful parade with lots of kids. And Mayor, this is our first time in two years that we've had, been able to do this.
I can't wait.
The community is waiting, we got you, we got a special card- The community is waiting. We got you. We got a special card just for you, okay?
I I'm practicing my wave and everything.
All right, that's good. Okay, and then the farmer's market every Saturday at the Elks Lodge. We have a farmer's market. You know where the Elks Lodge is, but they have produce, bread, flowers, wine, popcorn, coffee. I mean, I can't tell you how much they have. They got so many great things there. I spent so much money. I can't, I can't tell my family how much money I spent. But anyway, every single Saturday, it runs from uh eight AM until noon. Parking is available. So come on out and have a great time at our farmer's market at the Elks Lodge every Saturday. And then finally, Jazz in July, which is one of our favorite series that we have in District Seven. We have our series and it's going to start on the fifteenth, the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth. That's every Friday, well, not every Friday in July, but the last three Fridays in July. You should bring your chairs and your blankets and all the food that you want to make sure you have a wonderful evening with jazz on a warm, warm summer evening with the smooth sounds of jazz in the park. And you're going to meet lots of your friends and constituents in District Seven. So those are our three announcements for the month of July and we hope we'll see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Spice Mayor Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, we have a big event this Friday, too. I know this is one of Councilmember Harris's favorite bands, but Latin Touch is going to play this Friday in the North Natomas Regional Park. And Councilmember Valenzuela, we are bringing the lowriders back out because everyone loves them. So folks can come see the lowriders, listen to Latin Touch. And I think we'll have one, two, three, four, five, like seven food trucks out there and a bunch of vendors and a beer garden from Track Seven and inflatable obstacle course for kids. This event is from six to nine in the North Natomas Regional Park. It's really a lot of fun. And then, of course, we have our every Saturday Farmer's Market, too, at the Regional Park from eight AM until noon and free yoga in the park in North Natomas Regional Park at nine AM every Saturday as well.
Thank you. And last, members, um uh, this is intended to be the last meeting before um our our summer recess, but um I I I will be agendizing this week a special meeting on some of the uh questions that were raised tonight by uh by by some of the callers. Um, and uh prejudge nothing. Um, but I'm going to bring the question uh of an independent inquiry uh before the City Council sometime this week. So I know the city clerk is going to, is going to check all of your calendars and uh we will see you uh sometime later this week. If there's nothing else to come before uh the City Council, we are adjourned. Good night.